Meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order. Do we have a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor. The council approved a settlement of a claim by Barry Faden. It's a property damage claim resulting from sewer backup due to tree roots. And the amount of the settlement authorized was $75,393.
Okay, thank you. Can we have their roll call, please?
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. And Mary Ann Scott of the First Church of Christ Science will give our invocation at the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Mr. Rosansky please lead the pledge?
Sure, I'd love to. Please join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Father, Mother God, the principle, mind, soul, spirit, life, truth, and love that guides and supports all creation, we pause tonight to express gratitude for the beauty and abundance so evident in our wonderful city. We thank you for our dedicated and capable leaders and for our supportive and involved citizens. At this meeting, we pray that a spirit of wisdom and cooperation be present to mold our thoughts and decisions. May we come together in expressing the one divine mind and patiently listen for insight and guidance. May we express the one divine principle as our source of law and order and divine love as our spring of compassion and forgiveness. Let us remember that divine government is present here tonight for all to reflect, even in the smallest ways, and that human will has no place. May we be aware of the fact that divine spirit is present to meet all human need and that God's infinite love and goodness blesses all mankind now and always. Amen.
Thank you very much. We now have presentations. The first presentation tonight will be from the Newport Beach Ocean Sailing Association. And we will have Commodore Jane Benson make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Webb. Also, this is my vice commodore, David Garcia. And we just wanted to come in tonight to thank the city of Newport Beach for their great support of Newport Ocean Sailing Association and the Newport to Ensenada Race. The race will be starting April 28th, right off the jetty out here. We hope to again have close to 500 boats. This is our 59th year of being a part of the family of Newport Beach, so we've been a part of the family for over half its years in existence. So again, we're very grateful for your support, and I hope to see many of you in the coming weeks of the, in the events that will be happening for the Newport Ocean Sailing Association. I would like to give the city council a little token of our thank you by giving you some of our famous or infamous Mount Gay red hats that are prized by everyone. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to say something, David?
Just what she said, thank you again very much. We really appreciate it and I look forward to your support for next year, for the 60th, when I'm commodore. So I hope, look, see for you then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For those of you that aren't aware of it, I think she said it, but this is the largest international yacht race in the world. And we are very proud to have it start here in Newport Beach. And a lot of our local sailors participate, as well as those throughout the Southern California area. The next item we have is the Conference and Visitors Bureau presentation. And who is going to make that presentation? Oh, Mr. Johnson, I presume.
Good evening. I'm Tom Johnson, publisher of the Daily Pilot Newspaper, and this year's chairman of the board of the Conference and Visitors Bureau. I'd like to introduce Gina Frye, who's on the executive committee at the Bureau with me, and actually volunteering to run the Bureau on a day-to-day basis right now while we finish up the process of hiring a new executive director. First of all, I want to apologize for today's Chamber of Commerce weather and let you know that Conference and Visitors Bureau weather is just several weeks away, and I'm sure you'll enjoy that. The purpose of our visit here tonight is to make a donation on behalf of the Bureau of $5,000 to the Centennial Committee. We've obviously been very impressed with everything that's been done on that and wanted to make our own contribution to that. So I have a check for $5,000. We also put an ad in, in our most recent Visitors Guide that's mailed out throughout the course of the year to people that are interested in coming to Newport Beach. And so that's in there, also promoting it. And that was a value of about $5,000. I did bring copies to, so that each of you could have one. And I would like to compliment in particular Marie Knight on just what a great job we think she's done with the Centennial Committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate that check. Can you give it to the city manager so you don't walk out with it? On this magazine, if you look on about the third page, there's some nice picture in there, too.
Yeah, who'd that be?
The next presentation that we have is one that is...
Third page is picking it up.
Oh, well, I missed it. Whatever. The next presentation has, still has to do with the Centennial. Our Centennial Committee has put together a number of things, and we have one where we have been doing some coordination with the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And in that aspect, we put together, or worked with, is Jet Ritter here today? Good. Jet Ritter, Rutter, excuse me. And he wrote a play which was to be presented to the various different elementary schools within the community, and turned it over to Newport Harbor High School, who has the, what do I call it? It's the play, the players, the performers, they're performers, excuse me, to do this, to do the play. And as a part of that, we had a Newport Harbor High School senior, who is McCall McGregor, and she's here tonight, took this play and rewrote it a little bit and produced it. And we had a presentation before seven local elementary schools, which are all the elementary schools in Newport Beach. It's a 20-minute play. It celebrated the history of Newport. And it was sponsored and funded by the Newport Mesa Unified School District. And many thanks go out to Bonnie Swan, who was the educational department director under that. Thirty-five members of Newport Harbor High School Advanced Drama Class, led by drama teacher Gail Brower Nedler, participated as actors and technicians and audience elves. Now, if you don't know what an audience elf is, that's somebody that gets the crowd all active. And when you have a whole bunch of third, fourth, and fifth graders, you really need to get them motivated so that they don't throw tomatoes and whatever at the cast. McCall McGregor acted as both the playwright, director, stage manager, and she performed, they performed at Mariners, Newport Heights, Harborview, Lincoln, Anderson, Newport Elementary, and East Bluff. I attended five of the seven, and Councilmember Daigle attended the last one at the East Bluff School. And it was really a great, great to see how well-received this was amongst our elementary students. It was called Happy Birthday Newport Beach, and it really was a wonderful community outreach. I don't know how many hundreds of students we had, but it's probably one of the larger events we've had relative to talking about the history directly. And I would like to recognize now McCall McGregor and Jet Ritter, Rutter, excuse me. I'm going to get that name right yet. Come on up.
This is the team that put it together. I would really like to... The cast had such a wonderful spirit, each one of the plays that I attended, and they really were motivated and got the students motivated. And I think a lot of that was due to the work that she did. And here's a little special something in addition to some hymns for us, and we really appreciate the team and the charity we do.
Thank you.
And we really thank you. If you want to add anything to the project, come up here. Thank you very much.
In a slight continuation of that, we had a poster contest, which we judged posters that were prepared by students in the various different schools last weekend, and will be making, putting together an exhibit at the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum. And a coloring book is being prepared and will be distributed to students throughout the school district on the 30th of April. So this is our outreach program to the students of Newport Beach. That ends our presentations. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Nichols. Do you have anything that you wish to announce or put on a future agenda?
No.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Webb. I attended the congressional field hearings for the Subcommittee on Aviation, chaired by Congressman Mica. And our Congressman John Campbell was present at this hearing, and he's actively involved in aviation issues as they pertain to our community. And Congressman Campbell does support maintaining the caps at JWA. And part of our job as council members is to have good relations with our congressman and our state legislature on these very important issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, pure indulgence. In the aftermath of the Kelo versus the City of New London, Connecticut decision, Americans have become increasingly outraged at the potential of city governments to exercise the power of eminent domain, to take private property for the purpose of turning it over to another private party for economic development. On a national basis, there are more than 10,000 documented actual or threatened condemnations for private use. While California law is much stronger on this subject than the law in Connecticut, we have nonetheless witnessed abuses, most notably in a close by Orange County city, who attempted to take church property for the development of a big box retailer. Other examples of abuse exist statewide. As I understand the law in California, cities cannot generally engage in this practice. However, redevelopment agencies can and have, in the name of economic development, engaged in private condemnations and takings. As we look forward to assuming control of the Santa Ana Heights redevelopment area from the county, I believe it is important that the city establish firm policy as a matter of ordinance that we will not engage in this practice. As you know by unanimous vote, the Orange County Board of Supervisors has placed Measure A on the June ballot to extend this protection to county redevelopment areas. Residents of Santa Ana Heights may be forced, may be faced with the prospect of obtaining protections against private takings in June, only to lose them when the city takes over the district. This should not happen. Therefore, I am requesting the city attorney prepare a report for the next council meeting on the status of this practice in California and provide a draft ordinance addressing this issue. Specifically excluded will be eminent domain takings for public purposes such as roads, water lines, health and safety violations, and other public purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
If I could make a comment to the direction given by Mr. Curry to the city attorney, I don't want to legislate unnecessarily. So when you bring this back and you make sure you, we understand the state law that was in Connecticut, which did allow for takings under an economic scenario, and the state of California's law, which I believe does not, I just don't want to create an unnecessary legislation. But if in fact there is an advantage to the legislation, clearly I'm supportive of that.
Thank you. Mr. Selig?
I have nothing.
Mr. Rosansky?
Two quick things. I'd just like to make people aware that the Newport Beach Film Festival will be kicking off on April 20th. It's a little over three weeks from now. It's a great event. I encourage you all to come out. I believe there'll be movies at several venues in town, but most particularly at the big Newport and at the island theaters. After that, in May, we have the Relay for Life that's going to be happening over at Harbor High School. It'll be starting at May, starting at 10 o'clock on May 21st and going until 10 o'clock the next morning, or 10 in the morning, May 21st till 10, Sunday morning, May 22nd. It's a 24-hour event. Anybody who'd like to form a team and participate in the Relay for Life, you can probably call City Hall here, and they'll be able to hook you up. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of events. We, I think all the council members attended the police appreciation breakfast last, or it was last week, in which the police officers were recognized for the wonderful job that they have done on a number of different, I want to call arrests, throughout this last year. And it was really an honor for me to participate and see how well, how good they feel and how good that we felt about them related to the job, the great job that they do. We also have on this Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00 and 1:00 to 4:00, the general plan update meeting at Oasis. So this will be one that we hope that we get a number of people from the city that may not fully understand the general plan and to come out to that event. And then I'll close with my centennial moment, even though we talked about the centennial a little bit earlier. There's now 157 days until September 1st of 2006, when the city will become 100 years old. On March 29th, 1949, there were several things that were discussed, I mean, that happened. The Corona Mar Fire Station bid award was made, and they must have a digit or a decimal wrong here, because it only cost $17,000 to build it, and now we're asked, being asked $6 million for one of these things? Something's really happened in that timeframe. That didn't include the fire engine. Oh, no, it didn't. Also, on that, at that same meeting, they approved the annexation of the property that's now Horace Henson School. And the planter boxes were authorized to be installed in the Golden Ride Pedestrian Bridge. I thought they were there the whole time, but the bridge was built in 1928, and the planters didn't come around until 1949. In 1966, on March 28th, we ended up accepting the East Bluff Public Park into our system. So that's our centennial moment for this meeting. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Did you, City Clerk, did you want to read?
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 19, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. We have items 1 through 19 on the consent calendar. Is there anybody on the city council that wishes to remove an item? We'll start down at, Councilmember Curry, send?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Selig?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rosansky?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
I would like to still have that explanation that was given earlier on item 18, and also with regard to items 10 and 13, with regard to why, we've got some pretty healthy funding there, and I just question whether the Measure M funds, I like the explanation of why they're being used as they are in this area.
Okay, so those items are 13, 10, 13, and 18 that are asking to be removed. Councilmember Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway? I have none to remove, however, I'd like to comment on item 13, just to say that that is the retaining wall that was constructed along Irvine Avenue, just northerly of Santiago. I feel that it was a really great project that the Public Works Department completed, and it looks great, and thank you. Is there anybody, anything on this, any items that the staff would like to have removed? None. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Please come forward and let us know what that is.
Hi, my name is Dolores Oding. I'd like to get some explanation on item number four and item number 17. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to remove an item? Okay.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to make a correction or a change in, actually Dolores pulled number four. Never mind, thank you. I moved the consent calendar, items 1 through 9, 11, 12, and 14 through 17, and item 19.
Second.
I believe Oding pulled 17 as well.
Excuse me, there was a correction on item 19, which it was, it indicates in there that Councilmember Rosansky will be replaced by Councilmember Curry instead of Councilmember Selig.
Okay, I will second the motion that made that correction.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have item, no, we haven't changed it yet. That's what I was trying to think about. Okay, item 20, which is an appeal of the staff decisions of denial for special event permit, the application for the Kringle Chung Triathlon. And what we will do on this item is we'll start off with comments from the appellant, and then the city staff will make a presentation, and then we'll have public comments on the item. This is an appeal of a special events permit, which is a request from the proponents of the Kringle Chung Triathlon. We on the city council recognize the benefits of triathlons, and we're not here really to discuss the pros and cons of whether or not triathlons should be held within the city or any other athletic event. The main thing that we're interested in discussing tonight is the application and the reasons for denial and the comments that the applicant might have related to the denial letter. One thing should be pointed out, this is a longstanding triathlon. It's been around since 1978. And in that timeframe, a lot has changed in this city. For instance, the population in 1978 was around 60,000. It's now about 83,000. That's about a 38% increase, which means that we have a few more people, a few different changes that have been made in a lot of areas within the community. And our rules for conducting events have been trying, we have tried to keep them up to date to handle and take care of both our more dense conditions and greater traffic levels on the various different events. Our concern in any event that we have that closes public streets or uses public property is that we do it safely, that all participants are safe, that all non-participants that are living in and around the area and using the other facilities can not be unduly inconvenienced. And in this particular event, we have had a situation where we have received a large amount of correspondence. I know I personally have received probably in excess of 300 emails on this. Most of the emails are saying how great this triathlon is, and I'm not contesting that at all. I know that every participant is really, enjoys the event and participating in it. One of the things that the city council needs to do in this process, though, is to make sure that you are safely taken care of and that our residents that are not participated are not unduly inconvenienced. And so that in working with both the applicants, for instance, we have nine other major events besides this one that have close to 170,000 participants over our year. So we're pretty experienced in gearing out special events. And we feel that our staff has done an excellent job of running those events and keeping them going. We very rarely have any appeals, and I guess one of the things that bothers me a little bit is the tone of some of the correspondence that I've received and read related to this that has questioned the competence of our staff and the impartiality of our staff. And we work with our staff really, excuse me, 52 years, 52 weeks out of the year. These, this particular event works with them probably over a five-month period off and on. And when I hear complaints about staff members not doing the proper thing, and I then hear the staff side of it, I will tend to myself support the recommendations of the staff. But we are here today to listen to, hopefully constructive comments on how this event can answer the questions that have been raised by our staff. And we will try to do our best to make a decision that will be based on facts and figures and not personal statements and comments. So with that, would the applicant that has appealed our permit, please come forward and make his presentation?
My name is Jack Caress. I'm the president of Pacific Sports. This is Kyle Kringle, who is the partner in charge of Kringle Chung, our title sponsor. I'm going to say a few words first, and then Kyle's going to...
Excuse me. How long do you think you need to have for your presentation? Just a rough idea.
Five, 10 minutes maybe, at the most, between the two of us.
Okay, 10 minutes okay by the council?
It's between the two of them.
Well, you want 20 minutes? Is that what you're saying?
Well, having ever been through this process, I'm not sure. I prepared something that you've received, and I want to walk through it a little bit.
Okay, if you think it'll take you 15 minutes, and then we'll ask questions, and that doesn't count on part of the time.
Okay. I would hope, you'd probably get bored if it took any longer than that.
Okay.
So let's hope I don't go that far. And I appreciate your comments. So I'm going to do my best to stay within the objective frame of mind on presenting this to you, because obviously there's a lot of passion involved with this event. Personally, I've been involved with this event, both as a participant and the director of this event, for 28 years. If you don't know this, you probably do from all of the communications that you've seen. This race started 28 years ago in 1978. I went to school at UC Irvine, both my undergraduate and graduate work. And two of my classmates were Randy Howlett and Pete Syracuse, who started the Rusty Pelican Restaurants. And they decided, kind of sitting around having a beer at some point or a glass of wine at one of the restaurants, that hey, wouldn't it be fun to have a competition that we would compete against the other restaurants in town? Caskin-Cleaver, you know, Chart House, all the restaurants were on Pacific Coast Highway. In those days, getting permits obviously were a different issue than they are now. I remember applying for permits a couple of weeks before the event. But we all raced in the event, too. It was a lot different in those days. And the first race actually was a biking event. Bike was first, run second, and the swim was last, which is not the way triathlons are typically done anymore. Five or six years later, it got to the point where the race was large enough... or six years later, it got to the point where the race was large enough that it was a good time to have one per, and the restaurant chain had become big enough that one person needed to be more in charge than anybody else. I volunteered to do that. I was working on my PhD at the time at Claremont Graduate School, and thought it would be fun to do. And that, one of the reasons I'm so passionate about this event, our company, is that was the start of our company, Pacific Sports. Since then, we've, I've directed personally, and our company's directed over four hundred events throughout the United States and in Europe. We put on more national championship events, thirteen, than any other directing firm in the United States. Two of them were held here in Newport Beach in nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven. We directed the only world championship ever to be held in the United States in Cleveland, Ohio. And we currently, in addition to this race, we produce the Los Angeles Triathlon, the Catalina Triathlon, the Cleveland Triathlon, the Long Beach Triathlon, and a new event in October, the Huntington Beach Triathlon, and also do the Catalina Marathon, and several other events where we consult on. So this was the start of our career. We've been involved with the event ever since then. I think it's been a very successful event. We've been involved with, since the Rusty Pelican, they sold the restaurant chain, El Ranchito has been involved for the last, I think it's, Victor Vila and I were trying to figure this out. We think it's been nineteen years since their involvement. And we've had pretty much a who's who in the sport of triathlon at one time or another has done the event. And so I think that's part of what you've seen is, it surprised us at the amount of support that we've seen from all corners of the sport of triathlon. The biggest reason is, one, because I think the race has been produced well over the years. I think we've had a pattern of, of doing what was necessary in this city, in spite of some of the things that may have been said that, to the contrary, where we've done everything necessary. You don't have an event that lasts this long without doing at least most everything right. And, and we pledge to do that in the future. We've never been opposed to that. Let me walk through a few of the things that I, I was asked to put together some information, and I tried to narrow it down as much as I could. It's down to four pages, in response to the reasons that this was denied. I told you a little bit about the history of the event. The first thing is, under one A on your first page was the major road closures. There's information in the denial that indicates that the roads are closed longer than, if they're closed that long, they shouldn't be closed that long, let's put it that way. In the middle of my answer on, on A, on our answer, you'll see a timeline for the race. The race currently has started at six forty-five a.m. It has done that for several years. The first, it's a very, it's a sprint distance race, half-mile swim in the Newport Dunes, then a twelve-mile bike that goes through Newport Center the last two years, and then a five-k run that's on Back Bay Drive. So the swim course, I haven't heard any issues about the swim course or the run course on Back Bay Drive, at least not in particular. So really, the focus is on the bike course and the opening of, of jamboree. The first cyclist actually gets on the course at six fifty-five. It takes less than ten minutes for the leader to get out of the water and onto the course. And the, and these are from the times from our website. You can look at the official time. They're chip time, so these are correct times. These are not in any way inexact, and they can be confirmed. The first finisher of the race, last year was a Swiss native, Ian Pyatt, who won in just over fifty-six minutes, which is pretty remarkable. Not a time I'm familiar with personally. And then the last cyclist was, did the swim and the bike in eighty-six minutes, which means that that person finished, it was actually a relay team, we allow relay teams, that one person could do each of the three events, did it in eighty-six minutes, which means they, we were off jamboree into the transitionary and Back Bay Drive at eight-eleven. And these are results. I've talked to Paul Ramirez from Public Works, and my belief is, from talking to him, and you'd have to verify this from him, that it takes less than twenty minutes to open the roads, following the last cyclist being on the course, and we keep track of who that person is. The last finisher of the race, that means the run course, that means they did the five-k on Back Bay Drive, was at eight fifty-one a.m. We actually do the awards at the Newport Dunes at nine a.m. So the roads do not, they don't need to be closed, in our mind, at least not on, other than Back Bay Drive, for longer than probably two hours. We also, we're more than willing to move the race earlier, if that's part of some, that's never been discussed, but we'd be happy to do that, to six thirty. We don't wanna do it much earlier than that because it's difficult because of the sunrise and what have you. But that would move it up even another fifteen minutes. Negative impacts to residents, you look through my comments, there was an issue made about parking. All the parking for the participants is done at the Newport Dunes. We pay them a fee to use the Newport Dunes, and each participant pays ten dollars to park there, and I don't believe, unless you live close enough, that you would ride your bike down to the course, that you would probably do anything other than park at Back Bay Drive. We also, we've worked with, before Nike Town was out of business, so they were involved as a sponsor, but last year, we had Nike Women as a sponsor in Newport Center, and I know you've seen as part of some of the information that you've gotten from residents and participants, that there's a certain amount of economic impact that comes from this event and purchasing power and what have you, but I won't dwell on that. There's a letter from the Marriott talking about what impact they did or didn't have. They feel, they've been supportive of the event, and there's some commentary in there. The comment that's made about two Level Three events, the Jazz Festival, we don't have exact information on this, has been on the same weekend as us for eight out of the last ten years. We've never had an issue with them. We've worked in coordination with them on this event and getting any kind of vendors or artists in, and we have not had an issue. One of the comments was made at the opening of the gates. We checked with them since we saw the staff report, and, and in fact, it opens at ten-thirty, and the first act is actually eleven-thirty. And all of their parking will be at Newport Center. They won't be denied any access by any of their participants. And if somebody arrives very, very early, early on, they could park at Newport Dunes, just like the participants do, and wait on Back Bay Drive. We're not closing that down. Anybody can walk anywhere they want. The art walk, I, I don't believe that we're denying access to anyone to the art walk. I mean, Balboa Island is completely open, PCH Bayside Drive, the island will be available. If somebody was coming from the inland side, they would have to be altered down MacArthur to get to PCH and down to Marine. But that's why we have changeable message signs, and we agree with, there was a staff recommendation to put the signs out earlier. We actually thought that was a good idea. We would put them closer probably to East Bluff, so that motorists coming down Jamboree would be notified further in advance of the course and have the ability to turn sooner, rather than, at this current last year, we had them actually at San Joaquin Hills, which I think was a little late in the, in the process. But we, we'd work on where we thought that was the best, but we're all for having the message boards out there the week of the event. That is typical for an event of this type and closing down that one arterial highway. Going down to D, providing sufficient volunteers, I don't know if Carrie Parsons, does Carrie back there? She may want to speak. The last, I believe, since, since two thousand and one, the UCI Rowing team has been our official charity. They've also provided pretty much all of the volunteers necessary for the course. We get people from the Orange County Tri Club and some of the residents that wanna be volunteers, but the volunteers have largely come from UCI Rowing. And, and the great thing about UCI Rowing, and I've said this to Carrie, and I've said it to them personally, of all the events we put on, they're probably the best volunteers. And the reason is, they're very disciplined. They are used to taking orders from their coaches. They're used to getting up early, which a lot of volunteers have a problem with, because they're out on the water early. They park at Shellmaker Island, and they walk down to wherever they need to be, around the race site or on the course. They know the, the city well, so I think very highly of them. So we had, and as, we have an attachment that's, I put in here about the number of volunteers and their placement. We do have pre-event volunteer meetings. We do go over the course, and I, and I feel very strongly that our volunteer crew is extremely adequate. However, if we need more, we've, one of the things that's happened in this process, we've been contacted by all kinds of people that now are willing to volunteer. I, I don't think it would be difficult for us to add more volunteers, and we've kept those names in check, and if that's necessary, we'll add more, if that's something that is so desired. There's an issue here on the, the city, and their own. We turned in a completed traffic control plan before last year's, as we do for the last two years. Prior to the last two years, the city, as you know, we used the same course for nineteen years, and that traffic control plan was prepared by Jim Brailer, if you remembered him, and Janet Devan modified it. Then the council and the staff changed those requirements. So we've had a traffic, they changed it, I believe, in March of two thousand and four, a couple of, about forty-five days before our two thousand and four event. And we got a traffic control plan. We turned in the traffic control plan, and apparently, we did not, we're not aware of this till we got the bill for it, there, some charges were incurred by city staff to modify the plan. Well, if the plan was gonna be modified, we felt, and I won't give out the names of the people on city staff that confirmed this for me, that we should have been notified, and we could have taken it back to our traffic engineer and had it modified. But that's not, the bulk of the bill was for a traffic engineer to actually show up at the event. Well, when I contested the bill, I was told that it was not a requirement of our permit, that a traffic engineer be on site, and therefore it was up to me whether or not we felt that it was a necessary thing to pay. I do not believe it's a valid expense, but if, if it's absolutely necessary to make this event happen again, I don't think it's inappropriate to contest a bill. I never got an answer on why the bill was not going to be, we didn't have a hearing about the event or anything like that. So it's still outstanding. But you will find out, for twenty-eight consecutive years, we've paid every bill associated with this race. I don't think there's any other question about any other bill that we've ever not paid to any vendor, to any, anything of anybody. And that's, you know, that's a long pattern of history. Failure to clean up the event, I, I believe we did a good job, and I think Carrie might wanna speak to that. We have no evidence that any of these issues about cleanliness were in evidence that we know. But again, I will say, if that's the case, then I would be happy to have our staff and our, our volunteer crew meet with city staff and how we might go through and do a better job. The only fluid station we have on the course is on Back Bay Drive. It's one fluid station that the athletes hit on the way out and the way back. So there's only one fluid station that we're really talking about. So with it being, and the other thing I might add is, the fact that we're involved with UCI Rowing, they share Shellmaker Island with the Fishing Game people. They are as aware as anyone of the sensitivities of the Back Bay. So I feel pretty strongly that they do a good job. But on top of that, we send our staff out there to do an audit of the cleanup, and to our knowledge, it was good. Close the race route early in violation of the permit. I happen to be present at the transitionary. We set up the transitionary the night before the event. In fact, we left the area open. An individual from Fishing Game came down and was claiming that we were closing down the road. We were all standing there, said, no, it's not closed. We have the right to close it at six p.m. for our permit, but we left it open until after nine o'clock, and frankly, were very few cars. In addition, I don't know if they keep records of this, but one of the City of Newport Beach police actually came down to verify that it was open. They drove down the mile or so down to the site. So I know it was open from my own personal being there. The traffic signs, all of the traffic signs were in place. We were, I think his name was Officer Henry, or Sergeant Henry, came to me at approximately five a.m. that morning and said one of the signs wasn't working. We immediately called American Barricade. They sent out somebody, reprogrammed the sign, and it was working well before the start of the race.
Do you need another five minutes?
I'm, I'm pretty close to done.
Give him another five minutes.
Okay. How long have I taken?
Fifteen.
I can show, I've been a college professor a long time, so I guess I get windy here. Timely permit, completed applications. I believe that we have done a good job in putting in those applications. I think that there's ways that we could probably do better. One of the things in conclusion that I might add, it's important for the staff and the event management to work together in concert. And I think that we could all do a better job in doing that. I don't think that there was an event, a event meeting after the event last year that did not, we were not invited to. And I think that's critical, that we have a post-event debriefing that we can be a part of and address issues like may, may come up in these denials. And we sit around a table, in fact, this is one of the tables we've sat around in past meetings. I think those are critical to us being evaluated. We don't produce perfect events. We can always learn. After all these events, we still learn. Even after twenty-eight years in Newport Beach, we're still learning about what we can do better. And I think the way to do that is to work together. And clearly, unlike anybody would deny, that that has not happened to everybody's satisfaction. With that, I'll turn it over to Kyle.
Excuse me, please. It's not necessary to have applause after each one of the speakers. We recognize that there are a number of people that are in support. There are probably some that are in opposition, but we, it disrupts the meeting and makes it longer, so I would please ask that you not applaud or make other comments during the presentation. And if you wanna make a comment, please come forward and do so. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, my name's Kyle Kringle. I'm an attorney with law firm Kringle Chung in Irvine. I'm a resident...
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Fine. I'm a resident of the city of Newport Beach. I have three children that attend Corona Del Mar and Corona Del Mar Middle School. I attended UC Irvine, lived here my whole life. Been doing triathlons since I was probably sixteen. Still do them not as good or as fast as I used to. I'm here on behalf of the sport of triathlon and what I think it means to the community. There's not a lot of triathlons, and the number of triathlons are, they're going away every day for the very reasons that you're addressing. But I think if your concerns are the concerns for the safety of the participants and the spectators, and that there's no undue inconvenience to the residents or businesses, that the city staff report does not present enough evidence, or even enough evidence to deny the permit. I prepared notes based on the city staff's report that I would ask you to read at your convenience. I'm not gonna go over them in detail, but I will provide them to each of you. It addresses each of the comments made in the city staff report individually. When I first became aware that the triathlon may not happen because the permit was gonna be denied, I did some investigation. I wrote a letter and said, you know, is there any way we can get together and talk about this? Because it seemed like the issues were so miniscule. And if you read the staff report, I think the facts, and that's what my position is, that there's not enough factual evidence to support the conclusions that are in the staff report. The staff report talks about undue burden on the community and the businesses, and it lists a whole bunch of businesses, but it doesn't ever talk about any businesses ever complained about any undue burden. It doesn't talk about any resident that ever experienced an undue burden. It talks about some volunteers that went to McDonald's. It talks about one member of the, that went to the Jazz Festival that got there at five a.m. Come on, I don't think those support the things that you really care about, and that is the safety of the participants and, and the spectators, and two, is there undue convenience to the residents and the businesses. For instance, on the report, it mentions Back Bay Cafe. I know for a fact, I try to go to Back Bay Cafe every race afterward, and I cannot get in because it is too crowded. I would be willing to bet that Back Bay Cafe would come here and say, you know, we do more business than on eighty percent of the days on the day of this race. Same for Fashion Island. Fashion Island is listed as an area where there might have been undue influence. I regularly run and bike in the area, and there are very few people in Fashion Island before eight o'clock or eight-thirty. I just don't think that there is enough factual evidence. And I think, and I, I know you're sensitive to the city staff, and I'm sensitive to my staff and to the fact that this race really should be run. It's, it's an important race. And I just impress upon you, if you do not find that those, those factors that you say are so relevant, that you should overturn the decision. I want, it's my position, and it's my personal belief, that the decision was made that this race would not happen again before the application was even submitted. In my packet that I'll provide to you, city staff people said, why is the event on the calendar? You better find a new location, a new city to run this event. That's before the event had even, the application had even been submitted. How can the city staff be non-prejudicial when they're telling the applicant of a race that's run safely?
that's run safely for twenty-eight years, that they better find a new city? I just, I just think that this is a personality conflict. And I would hate to see a race that's been run in Newport Beach for twenty-eight years that's been run without incident, that there's no complaints by the participants, very few, if any, complaints by the residents, very few, if any, complaints by the local businesses to go away because of a personality conflict. And my support for that opinion is in my notes. I appreciate you listening to me. It's very dear and near to my heart. My firm participates, we probably have twenty people that participate in the relay. We have collages at our office of the race event every year. It, it just means a lot, and I think it, it would be a shame for the city to deny the application for the permit based on conclusions without facts. Thank you very much, appreciate it. May I-
Thank you.
... provide these to you?
Okay. Can we have a response for, from the city staff on this, a report from the city staff on this?
Mr. Mayor, we will. And Marie Knight, who is the Director of Recreation and Senior Services, will provide that. Beforehand, though, I would like to say a few things, and that is that it, it may sound to some that this is a very complex issue. From my personal point of view, it isn't complex at all. There are some things that are factual that I think are central to the whole issue. One is that there's a great deal of passion and commitment on the part of a lot of people towards this event. And passion is a good thing. Two is that the city of Newport Beach, as far as our special events policy, is not anti-sports events. And I think that will be presented in Marie's application. But three, from my point of view, this is not personal. Staff is professionally responsible for implementing an ordinance that council has passed regarding special events. I think the crux of the matter isn't about passion, it's about a policy. And a special events policy that was intended to balance the needs of special events in order for them to operate in this community against the needs of the community to see that it isn't inconvenienced beyond what is reasonable. Staff collectively feels that this event, as it's operated the last two years, has inconvenienced residents and businesses beyond what is reasonable, and has upset the balance that the special events policy is intended to protect. The shortcomings of the event operator have certainly exasperated this situation and this unbalance. But it goes deeper than that, because staff feels that this event, where it is run and where the course is, is, has such a significant adverse impact on residents, on churches, on businesses, and other users along Jamboree, that it, it is out of balance and is too great a negative impact. Since this appeal is on this specific event, I'll ask Marie now to talk about some of the things that were said in the letter of appeals, since that's what you're dealing with here. But I would like for staff, for council to keep in mind while she is giving her presentation, that there's a bigger issue here, just than who the operator is and how this event has been run in the past, and that is whether this event is the right event in the right place in Newport Beach. Marie?
Thank you, Mayor Webb, and members of the council. Just a brief report. A few things that we want to cover is, as Dave Kiff has called it, Triathlon 101, and, and he's given me that information because I am certainly not a triathlete. Background information about this event, our permitting process, other athletic events in Newport Beach, specific issues with the course itself, assertions that have been made by the appellant and our rebuttals to those, and a summary of our concerns and recommended actions. Just for the purpose of educating those at home or the council as far as what is a triathlon, and Mr. Kress covered that too as well. It's a very popular sport, it includes a swim, bike, and run component, four major distances of the triathlon events, as are listed there. And interesting to note that the USA Triathlon Association sanctions many triathlon events, including two of the four events that are in Orange County. And a sanction from this organization means that the event has been carefully reviewed by the experienced staff at USA Triathlon. The course is well-planned and free of preventable dangers, and proper insurance coverage is in place. There are four triathlons held in Orange County, to our knowledge. This one, the Krang and Chung Triathlon, which is not a sanctioned event. Orange County International Triathlon, which is in June, it'll be their first year, which will be a sanctioned event. The Pacific Coast Triathlon, which is sanctioned, that's held in September down in Crystal Cove area. And the Huntington Beach Triathlon in September, which is not sanctioned. This triathlon was, has been organized by Pacific Sports and has taken place in Newport Beach for twenty-eight years. It is one of the nation's oldest triathlons. And throughout the years, we know from staff that have worked with this event for many, many years here, over twenty years in Newport Beach, that as the community grew, the course had to be tweaked and adjusted. The current event includes a half-mile swim course, then a twelve-mile bike course, and followed by a 3.1 mile or a 5K run. A little background on the event itself. After the 2003 event, we determined, staff collectively, that there are too many negative impacts on the community, road closures, traffic delays, et cetera, and that the course would have to change. We met with Pacific Sports, we talked about alternative routes, we gave them an opportunity to come back to us and pitch a new route that they thought would work. And that took place over a series of many months and many meetings. We agreed to a new course and to try that in 2004 in order to keep the event. The new course was tried for two years, and after the 2005 event, it was determined by staff that, again, there were too many negative impacts in the community to allow the event to continue. Of all of our major events held in this community, of all of our Level III events, this event serves the smallest amount of participants, but yet takes the greatest amount of staff infrastructure the day of the event to make it work. Pacific Sports was notified of this decision in June of 2005, eleven months prior to their event in 2006. They submitted the initial permit application for the May 2006 event on January 11th, 2006. The application proposed returning to the 2003 route, the one that we deemed unacceptable. And in a few moments, Sergeant Dale Johnson from the Police Department will go over the two different routes and talk about the challenges each one presents. The application was denied because, one, it was incomplete, and, second, upon notifying the event holder of the application deficiencies, he still refused to submit the necessary documents to fulfill the application requirements. A second application was received proposing the route that has been used for the past two years and was denied for the following reasons. Major road closures were necessary for the event that are too significant. And in 2005, the course was locked down by 5:45 AM and Jamboree not opened until 9:30. And in response to Mr. Kress's remarks, I have an after-action report here from Paul Ramirez from General Services that outlines the timeframe that those roads were closed. And it's not just the timing of the event. We know the time the event starts and ends, but it takes our crews quite a considerable amount of time to then backtrack and pick up all the delineators, the barricades, the signs, and to open the roads safely. And that's what we're referring to here. There's a negative impact to the residents, businesses, and visitors. Two other Level III events were approved for the same day and would be negatively impacted by this event, the Hyatt Jazz Festival and the Balboa Art Walk, and their failure to follow permit conditions in the past. And now I'd like Dale Johnson to come and just talk briefly about the two different courses and the concerns that each of the courses presents.
Good evening. My name is Dale Johnson, I'm a sergeant with the Police Department. I was assigned in 2001 as the Special Events Coordinator for the city of Newport Beach, and in that regard, I participated in this event as a coordinator and as a planner for the event since 2002. I was involved in the decision to request that, that the prior route utilized up until 2003 be canceled, and we looked for alternate routes. And I also was involved in the decision to recommend that this permit be denied based on some of the same issues. Marie's talked about some of the, the process issues that we've run into, and, and we'll talk about them again in, in more detail. I'd like to talk about the routes themselves, specifically the problems that it presents for the community, problems that it presents for the Police Department, and, and some of the, you know, on-the-ground operational issues that have made this, this, this event very, very difficult. Prior to beginning, I, I'd like to point to the Municipal Code, Chapter 1103, and this provides us our direction in the planning and coordination of these special events. This is kind of our mission. When we, when we look at a special event, we try to figure out a way to condition it so it's safe for all, to provide regulations allowing for special events while mitigating impacts on residents, visitors, and businesses maintaining traffic circulation and ensuring public safety. From the Police Department's standpoint, on all of these special events, all the road races we do, and, and we do thirteen or fourteen a year, each one that we do, the Police Department's job is fairly simple, and that's to provide a safe environment for the participants in the race, and also to provide a safe environments for the residents and for the merchants and the other people who live in the city, to make sure they're not unduly impacted or, or put at risk by the event itself. This is the, the race map of the, of the race that was run prior to 2003. I, I know we're discussing the second route, so I won't dwell on this greatly, but to point out that many of the, many of the problems that we have with the current route are the same problems that we have with this particular route, and, and the reasons why we recommended a new one. You can see some of the areas here that were negatively impacted. Jamboree Road along the, the east curb, correction, the west curb line was pretty much closed. Denying access into, into the Hyatt, denying access into Park Newport, denying access or limited access into the churches along East Bluff Drive, denying access or limited access into Visita del Oro and the residences up in the East Bluff area, as well as the East Bluff Center. If then we come down off of East Bluff across Jamboree, we really didn't have a lot of problem at this area in Jamboree, because we were able to divert traffic onto MacArthur or other areas, so that, so we didn't really have a problem with this closure at all. But another problem we ran into was here at Bay Point. These people were, were pretty much locked into their residences for the hour, hour and a half of the, of the bicycle race, as were the people in the, at, at that time, the new community of Harbor Cove at Santa Barbara and Jamboree, and at Park Newport. We pretty much told those folks that for the duration of this route, you have to stay in your homes, because we can't let you in and out for the safety of the participants. One of the greatest problems we ran into in this, in this particular route was this, was the new off-ramp that was, it just opened that year at the 73 freeway on the University Drive. We were required to, we were required to close that on University at the bottom of the off-ramp. Now Caltrans has a policy and does not allow detours up on the freeway for commercial events of this nature. They would not allow us to detour that event or even put a sign up there, that, that off-ramp, or even put a sign up there telling us that, that there could be delays at the bottom of the off-ramp. The result was, we had literally hundreds of cars that got stuck on the off-ramp, because we couldn't let them off at the bottom, because you had bicycle traffic going back and forth. That particular year, there was, there was a soccer tournament at UCI, and people were actually banning their cars on the, on the off-ramp and, and running down the street and down the sidewalks trying to make their soccer games. The route was then exacerbated after they came back, because the run also went up Jamboree Road, forcing the road closures, again, for the Palisades Tennis Court, the, the Hyatt Newporter, and Park Newport until the run. We get past San Joaquin Hills and then, and then go down on a, on a path here to, to Back Bay Drive, or correction to, that's correct, to Back Bay. I bring this up only, only to illustrate that, that staff made the decision based on all of the impacts on the residents at the time, although we could safely close this, this racecourse and safely prevent people from getting on it, that it just simply impacted our community, our merchants, churchgoers, just too greatly for it, for it to be a viable option anymore. So that's when we asked that they, that they come up with a, a separate racecourse. And, and we told them, we gave them a word, we did everything we could to make it happen and to make it work, and that's what we did. This is the, the current racecourse that was run in 2004 and 2005. It, as Mr. Kress stated earlier, the swim portion of the race really provides us no, no problems or issues whatsoever. The parking issues are not ones that I'm familiar with, as most of the race participants park in the back on the Deanside side or park in the dunes itself. So the parking issues are not any that I'm familiar with. Where our problems begin, as Mr. Kress indicated, is when the bicycle, when the bicyclists hit the road. Now, the way that the, that the 2005 route was run, we actually stopped access here at Jamboree Road and did not allow traffic to go northbound into the race, and we stopped it up here at San Joaquin Hills Road, and we did not allow it to go southbound into the race. We stopped Jamboree pretty much between those two points. The bicycle race would then come up, up northbound Jamboree and then make the right-hand turn onto Santa Barbara Drive, and then come down, and as you can see, it would follow through Newport Center Drive, make some loops, and come on down. The problems we ran into primarily on this race was the Sea Island area, and, and again, the, the Harbor Cove area at, at Jamboree and Santa Barbara. What we elected to do, and it's a rather extraordinary thing for us to do so from a manpower standpoint and something as a, as a police department we've never really done before, we agreed to provide motor officer escort to the Sea Island residents out of there, through the race park or through the racecourse, as well as allow, providing an escort from San Joaquin Hills in and out of Harbor Coves in an effort to mitigate and make it an easier course for both the participants and also for our residents, to mitigate that as best we could. I say that this is a rather unusual thing for us to do. Quite frankly, it's not the safest thing to do, based on the number of, or the amount of traffic that we deal with. It requires us to actually interact very closely with the bicyclists and vehicles, and it's something that, for the most part, we try to avoid. After the 2004 race, as we began the 2005 race planning, some of the businesses began to complain. The Dunes, which is a, which is the, the actual host of the race, as well as the Hyatt Newporter Hotel, were very unhappy because we, we prevented their customers from accessing the, the racecourse itself. The Palisades Tennis Club has, has long been a very vocal opponent of the race, and my understanding is they have approximately 150 participants that come to that private club in order to play tennis Sunday mornings, and we just, quite frankly, told them they couldn't come. The Dunes problem stemmed primarily from people wanting to get in, launch their boats, use the camping facilities, and other things that went in there. The Dunes actually advised the city, myself particularly, that they would not approve another permit within, for the triathlon unless we can make them some guarantees that we would allow a way, find a way to gain access into their business. We made a similar agreement with the Hyatt, who was prepared to, to oppose the, the event also. If we made an extraordinary exception for these residents here, we went even further and beyond that, and I, I'd recommend that that's not the actions of a, of a staff that is trying to purposely submarine or, or prevent an act, an event from occurring. Instead, we extended ourselves, and we made a plan. What we would do is we'd post police officers at, at Pacific Coast Highway on both sides. We would also ask that the, that the race provide a large number of volunteers to assist us in this. And what we would do, we would go down to one left-hand turn lane, heading from eastbound Pacific Coast Highway onto northbound Jamboree. Same thing coming westbound onto northbound Jamboree. We would then contact each one of the res, or each one of the vehicles as it come to the corner, and ask them, "Are you going to the Hyatt Newporter, or to the Dunes, or to the Palisades Tennis Club, or to Sea Island?" And if the answer was yes, we would then pass them off and provide them an escort to the next, to the next interception. We would then wait there and have more staff there that would ask them again, "Are you going to any of these locations?" If the answer was yes, we would attempt to provide them escorts when there was break in, in the traffic from the triathlon, to get them across the traffic pattern, through the racers, and into the places that they wanted to go. We ran into a number of problems with this plan. One of the major problems was at this intersection here, the, the volunteers we asked to be there, a great deal of them didn't show up at all, some that did show up, the report was, went to get food and never came back. So we ended up adding this with about three police officers. The, the backup on Jamboree, on Pacific Coast Highway, because of the fact that we were queuing or backing cars up waiting to make that turn, actually extended on to Pacific Coast Highway, began considerable backup on Pacific Coast Highway as, as vehicles not realizing what to do, just got in line and were waiting to come through, and again, impacted traffic trying to head further east. We do some other very unique things in this race, or, or we tried very unique things in this race to make it work. One of them was at the Marriott Hotel. Sunday mornings is, we are told is a very heavy day for them, as they are having people check out. We were alter, we were bringing them actually through the parking lot of the hotel, out of the hotel, we then bring them across and drive them the wrong way down, down Newport Center Drive in an effort to get them through the, through the racecourse. Again, it's, it's a, it's a one-on-one process in which we have to pretty much escort most every vehicle out. And what we found in 2005 is that all these various operations that we attempted in, in an effort to, to mitigate or minimize the amount of impact on the various businesses, on the, on the hotels, and also on the people that, that, you know, came into Fashion Island to do business also, that it just didn't work. The, the racecourse became extremely complex, it became very convoluted, it became very, very difficult for us to manage it and, and maintain it. And based on my experience, that, that equals unsafe. It equals a problem with vehicles coming in too close to contact with, with racegoers and, and the participants of the race. From a larger perspective, I, I think staff, me, me being a participant in that, asked the question, that does a race that impacts approximately 800 participants a year, is it worth the impact on the large number of people that live in this area, the other events which have been created in the area, and the, the degree of safety which is sacrificed in order to try to make the event go off? In many ways, all of the, all of these elements combined to create a perfect storm and to- In many ways, all of these elements combined to create a perfect storm, and to perhaps put us in a position where this is just not a viable event for this particular area. The city just kind of outgrew its ability to give this kind of space, and this kind of access, to a commercial operation without impacting our citizens. I'd like to speak to one other point that Mr. Kress made concerning the complaints that had been received. I talked a little bit about the Dunes and the Hyatt, having, I had specific conversations with them. The motorists, the people that you're detouring, the people that at times we were telling couldn't go to church, or were having difficulties finding their way to their churches, I can't tell you the amount of anger and animosity it created among those people, and the amount of police officers that withstood a lot of, an awful lot of verbal hostility from them as a result of this inconvenience that was caused by this race. Now, these types of complaints aren't the ones where we stop and get the names of the people that are complaining. Obviously, they're trying to get where they're going, they're in their cars, and I'm sure we've all been there, where they can be a little vocal about their displeasure with police officers who are trying to direct traffic. I believe Director Knight's going to speak further concerning some of the process issues, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I'll try and progress a little quickly through the rest of these. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we do host a number of large events in town, a lot of runs, a lot of races that take place, a lot of participants. We've got the OC Marathon with fifteen thousand folks, Race for the Cure with thirty thousand folks, another triathlon, and we find that across the board, these events comply with conditions, they comply with new policies readily that are implemented, and we don't have any concerns or problems with them. I do want to now go through and answer a few points that were put forth in the appeal letter by the applicant. The first is that a statement made that the city council is faced with a decision on whether to believe less than a handful of individuals who have dedicated themselves the past two years to destroying this event, or a large majority who clearly want the race to continue. We have not tried to destroy this event. I think, as you heard Sergeant Johnson say, in some cases, a staff has gone well above and beyond to try and make the event work, and to try and mitigate any of the negative impacts. It's been said that we have meetings with municipalities and permitting agencies on every event we produce. This is true of every event in every city except Newport Beach, you can read the rest there. The reality is, for example, in 2004, for the Race for the Cure that serves thirty-some thousand folks, it's a huge event, we had to have one meeting with those event organizers. The Toshiba Classic, which is over many days, and has multiple thousands of folks that come down, one meeting with those event organizers. That year, we had to have nine meetings with the event organizers. Again, I think we spent a lot of time, and have spent a lot of time, working with them, and trying to work through some of the issues. If you look at the number of staff hours that were spent last year in review and preparation for this event versus Race for the Cure and Taste of Newport, we spent ninety-two staff hours on this event, the other two were considerably less. The permit fee that the city receives for a Level Three event is nineteen hundred dollars, or in 2005 was nineteen hundred dollars. Our staff costs for this event in 2005 were almost eight thousand dollars, just in the time spent in meetings, and working on the review process, and going back and forth. So again, I think we have gone above and beyond, and it almost has given this event a lot more attention than we have the majority of the other events that we have. Statement was made that they provided more than adequate volunteers for the 2005 event. The permit was clearly conditioned with requirements for volunteers. We got very specific, and if I go back to the map, you would have seen that there are certain areas that we called out specifically that volunteers had to be in place. And I don't discount the quality of the UCI volunteers or their dedication, however, we have after-action reports from the police department that at numerous places, the volunteers were either not in place, they found one volunteer who was directing traffic the wrong way on the race route, didn't know which way the people were supposed to go, and several volunteers who had no idea how to direct traffic the right way and out, if they were even in their location. This just kind of goes through what I was talking about, and in one case, too, our own general services staff, who is really charged with placing the traffic control cones out and the signs, who were on the side of the race course by the bike course, ended up jumping onto the course to help direct some of the bike traffic, because they found that there were not enough volunteers doing it at that location, and it was a very dangerous area of the race. The applicant stated earlier, and again in his appeal, that he does not owe us seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the extra work. The traffic control plan seems to be a point of issue with this event over and over again. This is something that is a highly detailed plan, it directs where closures are, it directs our staff where to put barricades, where to put delineators, how to direct traffic in and out. In this particular instance, on April twenty-first, our traffic engineer and one of the event organizers was driving the route, and noticed that the construction at the Marriott had to significantly then change part of the traffic control plan. In addition, at that same time, the event organizers asked for a change to the beginning of the route. They were notified at that time they would need to make a change to the traffic control plan. Mr. Kress stood here earlier and said that they were never notified that they would need to make a change to that traffic control plan. We have a series of emails that show at least five or six different times that they were notified that they needed to do this. This is part of the traffic control plan, it's very detailed, that we received for the event. I don't know if Dave brought another one. I think it's important that you see, if you can hold that up, just how complicated these are. Over the years, we've been told by the event organizers that city staff should prepare these, that they felt that we should take our time and staff time to prepare the traffic control plans for them. And we felt that it really isn't our responsibility, and there's a huge liability as well in preparing these documents, so we require them to be prepared by an outside professional, a certified traffic engineer. When they were requested, and this is why I find it so interesting that Mr. Kress says they were never notified they needed to change the traffic control plan, they submitted some hand drawings to us on several occasions to, that they felt would suffice. After numerous contacts with them about that, on May sixteenth, almost a month later, our staff, only five days before the event, was forced to change the traffic control plan. Because our general services staff needs time to review that, to understand, do they have enough equipment for the event, do they have to order more equipment, where is the equipment going to be placed? They have to come up with their plan. The appellant said that they cleaned the race routes following the event. We have information from the Department of Fish and Game that speaks to the contrary, that there was trash along the Back Bay Route, that they did not close the race route early. Yes, we can verify that a call came into the watch commander from someone from Fish and Game, stating that they were being denied access, and the, that was not supposed to shut down Back Bay until 6:00 PM, this was a little after four in the afternoon. Yes, Sergeant Lou did go down on site, and it wasn't until he showed up that finally access was given to the Fish and Game folks. They strongly disagree with our assessment that they have submitted incomplete applications. We require fully submitted applications at the time that someone is applying for a permit. Those permit applications get routed to every single department. If we are getting stuff in bits and pieces, it is highly inefficient for us to be approving applications. So we have made the policy that we will not send something out to review until it's complete. In 2004, their application was submitted on December twelfth, missing their detailed plot plan and race route, their traffic control plan, a vendor list, insurance, and community notification plan. Some of these things we may be willing to work with and give them a little leeway on, others are very critical, and we can't move forward in review until we have them. We gave them an extension to March twenty-second for their traffic control plan, they asked for another extension until March thirty-first, that was granted, and we still didn't receive it until April fifth, and final documents until the twelfth, for a May twenty-third event. In 2005, again, their application was submitted, missing certain critical things. The traffic control plan, I say, is a critical component for our review. It cannot go out to police, it cannot go out to our traffic engineers until we have that. And again, the 2006 application was submitted, as you're aware, from the staff report, missing critical items. The appellant says that they have coexisted with the Newport Jazz Festival for many years, and as he said, eight of the ten years. The last two years, when they have used the route that they currently are proposing to use, the Jazz Festival has been on an alternate weekend. Our police department did contact the Hyatt a few days ago, and they said emphatically that they feel that this event would negatively impact their event, and the general manager told us that they have folks that show up as early as 5:00 AM to get in line for the good seats, and that they would strongly, strongly recommend that we not approve this event, because they feel it would impact their event. And the fact that they feel as though they have coexisted, a few years back, we got a call from the Hyatt, they were very upset, because they received an email, unbeknownst to us, from the race director, essentially telling them that what they were advertising on their website was wrong, because he was going to be closing down the street and not allowing access for their event. Summarizing staff's position, we feel that the road closures are too significant, they result in too large of a community impact, and there are conflicts with existing and approved events. There are also problems in the past with the race organizer, noncompliance, timeliness, inadequacy of their application submittals, the volunteer staffing, and of course, the unpaid bill. Our recommendation to the council is that we, staff's decision is upheld to deny the special event permit.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council of the staff? Okay. What I'd like to do is open this up to the public, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we agree that triathlons are great, so you don't need to tell us that. If you have comments related to the permits, conditions that we have imposed, or the comments related to other items on the denial, please come forward and speak. Otherwise, we would like to, we would like to carry on with the event analysis. Just out of curiosity, about how many people feel that they need to speak? Okay, that sounds reasonable, we've got six or seven people, so we, I think, will use the normal five-minute timeframe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name, I just came off the last meeting, you should clue this. My name's Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach. I wasn't going to speak on this item, I really didn't want to get involved in this item. But considering the fact that I don't live very far away from Fashion Island, and I do sometimes go out for a ride around town to see what Fashion Island is like on the weekend, especially with the general plan update coming, and the four-hundred-and-fifty to six-hundred-and-fifty mid-rise units for, you know, like residential units that might be going there, I like to see what's going on. And I have to tell you that Fashion Island on a Saturday or Sunday at eight o'clock in the morning is a ghost town. There isn't anything going on, first of all. And so I kind of take offense to the fact that we have this event from 6:30 to 8:30, and that it's impacting so many people, when there isn't anything going on in that area, nothing. We recently gave fifty thousand dollars to a marathon that started in Newport Beach, ended in Irvine, with all the hoopla in Irvine, and we gave them fifty thousand dollars. We're complaining because we're spending fifty, and no disrespect to anyone that works for the city of Newport Beach, please, that we're complaining about we spend seven thousand or fifty-seven hundred, we just gave fifty thousand dollars to another race, it's not a triathlon. I've been on the big island of Hawaii when they do their triathlons, it's a very spiritual kind of moving thing, and I think without passion, we wouldn't have a city of Newport Beach, we wouldn't have a country if it wasn't for the fact that people had passion about what they believe in and what they do. Also, I'd like to know why we don't have a probation type of a program in the city of Newport Beach. When something has been established here for over a generation, this is our centennial, what a centennial moment that we're trying to create this year. They've come here for twenty-nine years, and so two years ago, they started to have problems. We should have a probation period when something like this might happen, so that they can be put on notice, unless they make their corrections, then they won't be able to come back. Jamboree was closed until 9:30 AM, and people had to have other access and other routes. Maybe we could make believe that we're having an emergency disaster, and people would have to find alternate routes, because we don't do any emergency planning. So maybe we could take this opportunity to try to do that, and that's not really a joke. We do need to get involved in some emergency planning in the city, and you know my passion on that issue. So I'm very saddened by this, I think that the staff does a good job, but I think that when we want to put on a program to make something not work, we can really do that. Again, we gave fifty thousand dollars away recently, I think we really need to look at this. It impacts us as a city, but not to the extent that you're talking about. It is a ghost town at Fashion Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
First of all, I'm proud of the fact-
Hold on for just one second.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you, you can always give the appellant the opportunity for rebuttal, and you may want to ask them if they want to reserve that until the end of the public comment, but at some point in time, whether it's now-
You will be given an opportunity to rebut, do you wish to do it now, or would you like to do it later?
I'll wait till public comment's over, but I am a member of the public, so I think I would be entitled for three minutes. I wasn't aware that we got to rebut, but I'll come back as soon as public comment's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward, don't sit in your seats. If you're planning on speaking, move down to one of the rows in the front, so that it doesn't take quite as long to squeeze.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I-
Would you please state your name and your place of residence?
I will. First of all, I'd just like to say, good evening. Legal disclaimer, I just want to mention that, for any purposes, what the film is taking action of. My name is Xavier Victor Peniche Fuentes, I was born in Hot Houseville twenty-five years ago. I, yes, Social Security.
Slow down.
Sure, my name is Xavier Victor Peniche Fuentes, I was born in Hot Houseville twenty-five years ago, Social Security number six-three-six-six-two-eight-four-zero-eight. I would just like to have a clear issue, I would like to call the housing authorities, or there are the apartments at Coronado South, which are under the dominion of United Dominion, that's their, the name of the company where I live.
Excuse me, are you talking about the triathlon at present time?
No, this is, I would like to-
This isn't public comments in general, so that what you need to do is, this is right now, is the item related to just the Pacific, I mean, the Kringle Chung Triathlon? You will be given an opportunity for public comments a little bit after this item is over.
Oh, is that right?
Your little, er-
Oh, that's right. Actually, I would like to say that, I heard Officer Sergeant talk, and I believe it's actually real fun, if that would be possible. So many policies, you should-
Continue. If you're going to talk about the triathlon, please, okay, please proceed.
Mayor, thank you very much. I do believe that would be real fun. Regarding the other issue I heard, I do agree with Mrs. Ma'am, I don't know her name, that it is true, Fashion Island is a ghost town, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on the triathlon?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Webb. I know that you said not to come up here and support the triathlon in general, but talk about specifics, but I do want to come up here and support the triathlon, and kind of share some things with you. My name is Robert Mortensen, I'm a homeowner in Newport Beach, I'm a business owner, I'm a triathlete, and I've been an active member of this community for over ten years. I love this city, I love this people, and I love the events, and I love the traditions that we all share. I can understand that for some people in Newport Beach, the triathlon's not the most important issue on the agenda, and I think that that's what I continue to hear here the city represents. It's a small event, it impacts too many people, it's not important, it's not important, it's not important, it's meaningless. And it just seems that the meaning of the event is lost in that perspective. And then, what I'm fighting so hard to save this triathlon for is, for me, it's the perfect race. It's the perfect race, because it's a perfect distance, it's the perfect time of year, and it's in the perfect place. Clearly, I'm not alone, because thousands of other people over the years have also supported this event, and it's a longstanding tradition in this community. I'm not a, I don't know Pacific sports, and I'm not here to support them, I've never met Jack Karas, I just know that I'm a participant of the event. And as a participant of the event, I know it's a safe event, it's a fun event, it's a great community event, the people love it, I think I sent you all some presentations, I don't know if any of you got to see them, but you could see the smiles on their faces, the families that come out and support the event, the people, I don't know where all this negativity comes from, but if there are issues, and I think to this woman's point up here, I would strongly promote and support some sort of appeals process, that we can continue to work these things out. What I heard is, generally, there's no way, no possibility, no way, no how, nowhere. Now, for me, as a participant, one of the things that I think is an issue is, and I think we do, as participants, have an important role in this, is that for us, this was the first time we ever heard of any issues. We never got to stand up, we never got to be part of the process, I never got to volunteer and say, hey, Mayor Webb, I'll come down, I'll help you out, I'll support you, I'll work with the city, I can mediate if there are issues, I can understand some of the events- events, I can propose alternative courses. There are all sorts of alternatives to this, other than just denying it. And that's what I'm supporting and request here today, that we, one, we agree that we support this event in general, and that, two, we agree that we support working out the differences that we have. We can probably change the course, we can probably change the impact on the city, but don't just throw this event under the bus. I mean, I think this is crazy. If we're all, you know, if this is our standard, that there are impacts to the community and issues to the community, and I look at the other events that we have in the city, I mean, I go to the boat parade every year, and certainly, the traffic impact on that is like 10 times greater. I mean, we have the Taste of Newport, and one of the things I think we should be concerned about is, you know, it's public drinking. At the end of the event, I think everybody goes home, and half of them are probably drunk. My point of that is, is that if we want to find negativity, and if we want to find a reason to end something, we will find a reason to end something. And everything that I heard, that the city was talking about, is a reason to end something. And there's just a whole missing piece of what this event is to the people, what it is to us as participants, and I'm positive, absolutely positive, that somehow, we can work this out. Now, I don't know if it can be worked out for this year, and one of the things I think I wrote in a letter to you, Mr. Webb, or Mayor Webb, is that let's allow this event to continue this year. And I think I heard Pacific Sports LLP come up here and said, look, okay, there are issues, let's work them out. Tell us what they are, we'll fix the ones we have this year. And if there are traffic issues, then let's work next year to figure out what the traffic issues are. That's all I'm saying. So, I want to go on record categorically that I support this event. I know that there are thousands of other people that support this event. If there was a problem with this event, it would have ended a long time ago. It didn't take the city staff to come up with a reason to end it. And I think it, I think the city council needs to see the wisdom of supporting events like this in Newport, not only for now, but for a long time in the future. And I know that if the council sees the wisdom of this and supports the event, the city will come around, and all the parties will work together. I believe that this is probably an issue that's related to parties not being able to work together. It's communication and collaboration. And I'm asking you to support the parties, meaning the event organizers in the city, to communicate and collaborate. I don't, I know that it's very difficult for you to probably override the decision of the city council or the city manager's office. I know that you're not going to take that lightly, but I request that in this particular case, for this particular event, that you do, please override their decision for the future of this event, for the future of the participants. It's a good event, it's good people doing this event, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just being characterized, so come down this year and see it for yourselves if you haven't. I'd like to know, I mean, how many of you have been there? Come down and see it for yourselves firsthand. All this stuff is secondhand. Just come down and see it. Prove it this year, work it out next year, and let's move on. Thank you. Let's get out of here, right?
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm standing up to speak tonight also as a advocate, supporter of triathlons. I won't go into detail of why that is, but I have raced a lot of triathlons, not in the past year, perhaps I've been too busy as a community advocate or activist, but I have raced this race twice, and I've done multiple triathlons in my life. And in my experience, I'll just share one race that is held in Hawaii every year, on Oahu, it's called Tin Man, and it's a Olympic distance, which is longer than this race. It takes about a little over two hours, two to three hours, depending on your, you know, your ability. And that race goes from, starts at like 6:00, and it ends at about, because some people do go slower, and they do it in waves, and so, it ends at about, you know, 11:00 or so. Again, it's been running like this race for 25 years. The people of Hawaii, and this is in Honolulu, around Copeland Park area, the people in Hawaii know, hey, Tin Man, it's Tin Man Day, and they just plan on that morning, you know, that's the deal. These people have the roads, and they have to wait all the way till 11:00 or 12:00, until they finally open them. I hear that this is till 9:30. And so, they just, you know, the residents are fine with that. Now, I've heard of races, I know of races that have been canceled because of two reasons, or have they stopped continuing. One is, the race organizers run out of money. Two is, if there's a fatality or an accident. And, you know, certainly, that then alerts the liability issue for the city, and they say, hey, we don't want to take that risk anymore. But in this case, you know, after listening to this previous gentleman, I do hope that you can have maybe this year as a probationary period, and really try and work it out, because it is a great race. And I do have one, perhaps logistical recommendation, which is, and I have no idea, because I haven't looked at the distances, I should know, but I know the swim, it goes swim, bike, run. The swim starts right there at the dunes, and it's an out-and-back course. Perhaps they could do a point-to-point, where they start there at the dunes, and they finish at North Star Beach. It may be a longer swim course, and it may not be deep enough, but perhaps if it is, then they exit the water at North Star Beach, and they start the bike course, and now they go down San Diego and those roads, which would be a lot less traffic, and then they could also do the run out there. Or they could even do the run, in other words, they have to set up other transition areas, but this might be a solution to the jamboree issue. So, I hope you can work it out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, my name is Andrew Bailey. I'm a former resident here of Newport Beach and a graduate of Newport Harbor High School. I currently live in Laguna Beach. I've been doing triathlons for quite a few years. I've been involved with this triathlon from its inception, either as a participant or as a volunteer. I did the race last year. I didn't do it the prior year, because I didn't particularly like the bike course doing three laps around Fashion Island. I liked the out-and-back course, where I used to go out quite a ways on university. But I did it, and I thought it was a good race, and I thought the impact on traffic was very minimal. It only took us a few minutes to go from the dunes to the Fashion Island, do our loops, and come back. I think Mr. Karas is pretty accurate as far as the timing goes. As I remember, the whole thing was over by 11:00. The awards were done, everything was cleaned up, and we were on our way home. I would encourage you folks to, do like the city of Laguna Beach does, have a design review process. If people disagree with the design review, they can come and put their points forward. In many cases, the city council then will ask the design review people to work again with the applicants, to come up with some way of being able to meet the requirements that everybody has. So, I would hope that you might be able to do that with this race this year. The other comment I'd like to make is, this is a growing sport, particularly with young people. I believe the city of Huntington Beach has a high school triathlon club now. I know a lot of the high schools in San Diego have a youth club. I think this is a very good thing for youth. It's nice to be able to have this race right in our own backyard, that we don't have to travel miles and miles and miles, and get up at the crack of dawn even earlier than we have to normally when we have a race that starts early like this race does. So, I think it's a great thing for the kids in this community to be able to do, and also for the rest of us that live close by, that we don't have to travel miles and miles also. I just kind of assumed that this race would continue on forever, because it's been around so long, and particularly, I thought it would be a great thing because of the centennial coming up here, that this would be another added feature for the centennial. So, I surely would miss seeing it as a part of the centennial celebrations. The last thing I'd like to say is, a lot of us, multi-sports people, do a lot of different things, too. I just did the race here in Fashion Island, raced for the schoolkids here. We do most of the races that they put on down at the Corona Del Mar State Beach, Chambers, Corona Del Mar Scenic, and we do our swims there twice a week. We do a Thursday night swim and a Sunday morning swim at Corona Del Mar. So, there's a lot of us that are interested in a lot of other things besides triathlon, but because of the venue here, it's a nice place for us to race, since it's close by to home, and we have an opportunity to train right here locally. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. We're kind of straying into how great triathlons are. I'd like to see if we can bring it back to discuss our conditions and the problems we're having. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Webb and council members. My name is Ani Kerian, and I represent the Hyatt Regency Newport Beach, representing the Jazz Festival. It has been, the Jazz Festival has been inconsistent for about 16 years now, and has been, just been getting bigger and bigger each year. And thank you so much for Sergeant Johnson for all he said. The only concern we have at the Hyatt is the major road closure. It may be true that the show doesn't start at 10:30 or 11:00, and the artist doesn't come until like 9:00, but we have, our tickets, our wheel calls, and our tickets are on sale at as early as 7:00 a.m. And also, we need to have our vendors set up their booths as early as 6:30. And for us employees, we have to be there, like I personally have to be there at 5:30 a.m. So, if jamboree is closed, that would be major inconvenience, we don't know how to get to the hotel. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Parsons. I am a resident of Newport Beach. I am also the head rowing coach at, for the women at UC Irvine, and I happened into the opportunity to work with Jack Karas. I used to compete in the triathlon, and one year, I was late on my registration and called it in a couple days before, and I got to talk to Jack. He answered the phone, and we started talking, and he was a graduate of UC Irvine, and he asked if we would be interested in becoming his, the people he supports. And in return, we provide a lot of the volunteer staffing for the event, and have done so for the past, I guess, four or five years. On race day, I have generally about 80 people that are my athletes, men and women, on the course. They, we do have, I do have several, two, three, sometimes four meetings with these athletes that I work with on a daily basis, starting in September. So, by the time May comes around, they, I do have a very good relationship with them. They do get up at 5:00 in the morning, we do share the island with fishing game. As far as, they meet with me that morning at the boathouse at 5:00 a.m. to check in, go out to their posts. They are sent out there. I personally manage from the finish line area. They are required to come back and check in with me when their area is done, so if they're on the cycle course, it's in the beginning, they come back and help at the finish line. Everybody's at the finish line by the end of the race. And I personally oversee the trash cleanup, and we are highly, highly sensitive to the area. Last year, we were able to participate with Fishing Game in the Back Bay Cleanup. We do work very closely with them, and the athletes sharing the island with Fishing Game are very aware of the sensitivities of the area. The athletes themselves love the event, they love staffing the event, the enthusiasm. A lot of them go on to start competing in triathlons as alternate training, and it's been a great exposure for them and, in general. I did have an opportunity to read the permit complaints about the volunteer staffing, and to my knowledge, I cannot substantiate the complaints. I can't imagine that my crew would leave their post once it's signed. They would never not show up to a workout or complete it, so the thought that they go out where somebody else is racing. And rowing's an obscure sport, so there's a lot of people that donate a lot of time to make it happen, and they're very aware that personnel is important to make events happen, and take their position as personnel in this event very seriously. I also debrief with them afterwards, and I was informed by Jack of a few of the police that had talked to him about some of the incidents, and went through my staffing report about who was assigned where, and retouched base with them, and was not able to come up with any, nobody told me anything that substantiated what that was. So, that is, I think it's a great event. And they do also give us money. We do it as community outreach, and we do get a donation back from them. And again, rowing is an obscure sport. We are definitely supported within the athletic department at UC Irvine, but all the donations help us a lot. And we, you know, we practice on Newport Beach every day, nine to 10 months a year. So, the athletes are very much a part of the community that staffed this event, and have had nothing but positive comments come back from them, and really, they enjoy it, they look forward to staffing this event, even though they have to get up at 4:30 in the morning to get there. That's all.
Thank you very much.
My name's Rick Wong. I live in Newport Beach. If you look at my body, you will know I'm not a triathlon athlete. But it obviously is an area that people have passion for, and it's obviously a good thing. And I think just to arbitrarily say no is kind of silly. However, there were several things that were said today that caused me pause, and one was from the police officer, when he was giving the reporting, talked about safety, safety of the participants and some of the other people, and gave an example where somebody was given directions to go the wrong way, people not at their posts. And I'm not an attorney, but if I was a personal injury lawyer, I think I would be happy to have his report that it's unsafe, and if the council went ahead and approved the permit, knowing that the police department's opinion was it was unsafe, I would think that would create a liability for Newport Beach. Again, I'm not an attorney, that's perhaps a question for you, sir, or the other attorney who's part of it, but it seems to me, you can't, you know, under the present circumstances, approve the thing, knowing your police department said it's unsafe. Second thing, and I don't know the impact, I live in Newport Coast, not near Jamboree, but it seems to me, if you're going to set somebody's in their house, an inability to get out of their house for two hours, three hours, one hour, I don't think that's right. And to impact a business like the Hyatt, if they oppose it, it seems to me it'd be the organizer's job to go get support from the Hyatt, from the churches, and things like that, to go ahead with it. So, I mean, people have been talking, and I think probably it is a good thing, but I'm more concerned about, you know, potential liability, and you've got to think of, you know, the people other than the participants that you're impacting or inconveniencing. And I haven't heard anybody from, and maybe it's a good opportunity, from the people who support the triathlon, what they're going to do for the people that are stuck in their houses and their neighborhoods for two hours. And if their attitude is tough, gosh, that would give me pause. If they have a plan for how these people can get out, how they're going to notify the people, how they can say that, you know, there's 100 residents here, 90% say it's okay with them.
Please speak to us.
I'm sorry.
Please speak to us.
Okay. I'm done then.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on the triathlon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael Lawler, 1515 Cumberland Lane, Newport Beach. Good evening, Mr. Bloudow. I am not a triathlete. I used to be, I'm retired now. I spend my time coaching my son, Scott, in his triathlete endeavors, and he's been a participant in the Newport Beach triathlon now for two years, and was hoping to do it again this year. I think it's a great event. It's been around for a long time, and I'd hate to see it go. If there are some specific concerns that can be addressed, I hope that the staff and the promoter of this event can get together and work those out. If it's some additional volunteers, maybe some of the students at Newport Harbor High School, particularly the track team or cross-country team can get together and help with some of the volunteer positions. If it's a little bit of money over some staff time, like I think I saw in the paper today, it was 700 and some dollars, that there's a bill that needs to be paid, I'm sure that that can be arranged with perhaps some kind of sponsorship to help with the event. So, I'm just here to lend my support, and I hope that the city council will find a way to make this event happen, rather than to try to kill the event. I'd like to see it continue. I'd, I'd like to see it continue. As far as the liability goes, with any major event, even a, a simple five K race, there's going to be some safety issues. And so I, I hope that that's not overly played out and, and that you guys are able to see through that, that, that with, with proper volunteerism and the police support, that the safety issues can be mitigated. So again, I want to say thank you very much for your consideration. I hope you agree to find a way to make this thing happen rather than trying to make it not happen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd say about, some of these last speakers are just speaking to support the marathon. We've had three hundred emails and unless somebody can come up here and address the specific issues of the police officer and/or Marie Knight, I really don't wish to hear anything more about support the marathon. I mean, triathlon. Sorry. But we need to be specific to the issue at hand and that is the safety of the event.
Please come forward.
Well, just briefly, I would, I certainly support the triathlon.
Can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry, Brenda Martin. I live in Newport Beach. I have grandchildren that I would like to keep attracted to coming down to Newport Beach to be at Grammys and enjoy some of these wholesome family kinds of activities. When we talk about safety and concerns with the police and whatnot, we're more known for our wild parties, our draw for people coming into our area, our, what we used to call the war zone down here as far as that sort of thing. And just one more thing about, in answer to the Hyatt complaint or reservation, this would actually be the third day of the Jazz Festival. Would they be still setting up things on the third morning of the Jazz Festival and need to be in there? They would be?
Yes.
They, they don't leave things set up the whole three days?
Ma'am, if you listened, it was people queuing up to get seats in the front row and they show up at five thirty in the morning to attend. It's actually the attendees, no.
Oh, I thought she said that it was the setup, people that were coming in that.
And the staff does have to show up to, on a regular basis.
Okay, well, it, it seems to me that this is probably less of a hazard and a safety issue than a lot of the activities that we do have going on, but I would, I would like to see it stay.
Okay, we just about finished the, okay, I was going to get down to the applicant's rebuttal.
Good evening. My name is Erin Colander and I only have one comment. In the Pacific Coast Triathlon, they have a different way of setting it up where they have a, an ongoing traffic lane in each way on Pacific Coast Highway, a very busy place. So perhaps we don't have to close both sides of Jamboree. This has always confused me, even when I was riding my bike, why both sides are closed. They, if they move it to one side or do it in the same pattern that Pacific Coast Triathlon, which I guess you would oversee that as well, say they managed to do it there where you always have ongoing traffic being able to get through. And I have one other comment. If it is so difficult, perhaps we can delay the date of the race and put the race at a different time as the Jazz Festival and the Art Walk. Maybe that could help.
And just a comment related, Coast Highway doesn't have a raised median and so it's easier to transition back and forth. And this particular event completely crosses Jamboree at two locations to where you can't allow the traffic on either sides. On the, the Coast Highway one, they stay on one side without having to get on the other side. So that's, there's a major difference. It doesn't quite work.
It doesn't work the same way.
No. Okay, I think that, all right. One more.
I'll make this quick. My name's Jerry Chang. I planned on doing the triathlon this year and I was, you know, not happy to hear that wasn't happening. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who tried so hard to make it work. In, in, in the case of volunteers, I'm here to represent the Orange County Triathlon Club. We have anywhere from one hundred and ninety to two fifty members. There's been a lot of support. If this event needs, you know, if there's a safety concern in terms of, you know, reliable volunteers, there's tons of us that will be willing to do it. My wife, myself, I have about four or five other people that said they, instead of racing, they'll come out and volunteer to help, help the race and keep it safe. I mean, triathlon, the, the type of individuals that do it were, you know, very dedicated, type A personalities. I mean, I can see how it would get passionate and I, I hope that it's, you know, the people don't suffer for, you know, logistical issues. I mean, you know, commu, lack of communication. So I, I really appreciate you guys, you know, listening to, to the public and, you know, us Babylon, and I appreciate all the hard work that you put into it. I'm not affiliated with, you know, Pacific Sports or, or any other organization that benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that, I don't see anybody running up here, so if the applicant would like some time for rebuttal.
Mayor, I might suggest that you close the timing for public comments on, and then authorize the rebuttal period for the applicant, for the appellant.
Okay, I'm closing the public comments and no more than ten minutes for the applicant's rebuttal.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I really think it's a shame that the effort that was put into acquiring enough, apparently enough factual evidence to deny the permit, was not put into making this race go. It's, it's a shame to me as, as a citizen and resident of Newport Beach that our city staff cannot put aside their personal feelings to really try to facilitate this race. And I think that's clearly what happened. The presentation by the city staff, contrary to Honorable Mayor's comments, was directed pretty much at one individual. And we made a concerted effort to abide by your comments and not get personal. And I'm proud of the fact that we didn't do that. I just wish that there was more facts. The police officer came up here and told you about some concerns, but I'm a lawyer and a court of law. You can't say after the permit was denied, he went and called the Hyatt to try to find out, get someone that really criticized a local business, a local business that actually criticized the event. It doesn't seem that evidence acquired after they denied the permit is really that relevant or goes to the basis for the denial of the permit. I haven't heard anyone other than the, the young lady that came up and spoke on behalf of the Hyatt or any residents. I haven't seen a complaint that they were inconvenienced, that this race is unsafe. It may have been a little bit of an inconvenience to the police department. It may have been an inconvenience to the city staff. They complained about ninety-two hours spent on the application, but how many hours did it take to put together the, the PowerPoint presentation? My gosh, had we had that support, I think this race would be going forward. And it's an absolute shame if this race goes away because of that fact. And I appreciate your time and I know triathlon's not a big deal here with the city and, but it is important to a lot of people and I, I think the community, as, as one person mentioned, the community should be viewed as a place where there's healthy wholesome family activities. I've seen generations, grandparents, parents and kids in this race and it's a shame that that might go away. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, could I just say one concluding remark?
Mr. Manager?
About two minutes. I, I started out staff's remarks in saying that this is a policy issue and, and I hope that that clearly showed through. It, it does bother me to hear people say that it's personal and the staff didn't try when the police personally escorted people in and out of that location. And what they're saying to do, that creates a dangerous situation in and of itself. This is bigger than just this event being run by anybody else. We think it is the wrong event and the wrong location with too much upset to the public.
I had indicated that there'd be ten minutes for a rebuttal and I noticed Mr. Caress in the back. Would you like to say something? Can you?
Well.
You've got about five minutes.
Okay. Tell me if I'm getting close. I mirror a lot of what Kyle Crane said in watching that presentation. If I had to vote, I'd vote against this triathlon. From what was presented on that screen, I, I don't know how you could go a different way. I could sit here for all night and pick apart each and every one of the complaints and the comments that were made, but I don't think that's very productive. I don't think that's going to help out in our cause. The race has been safe. We haven't had any injuries in the history of the race that have been anything beyond cuts and scrapes in twenty-eight years. The traffic control design was prepared so that people would not be stuck in their houses. I wasn't aware until today that anybody was ever escorted in any part of the course. That's brand new news to me. But one thing I'll say, not to get, I don't want to get into the minutia of it because I could do that for a long time, is one of the things that I wish would have happened and it still could happen in my mind, is that when we changed the course in two thousand and four, one thing that I have to mention is it was brought to, and Sergeant Johnson was the one that brought it up in the meeting that we had, that would you think about moving the race entirely within Newport Beach? The course we had for nineteen years, one of the things that wasn't represented on that course was the fact that it's a rolling course. In other words, as the cycle course moved past like the Hyatt Newport, it immediately opened up because we didn't come back that way. So it looks as though that entire course is closed down for all that length of time, but it's actually a rolling open if you, I don't know if you understand what that means, but as it went past each area, that part of the course would open up. And one of the beauties of it was it was on Back Bay Drive. So that was one of the reasons we liked that course and it worked for nineteen years. Nothing really changed of any substance to make that change, but we were approached to move the course. We thought that that was going to be a positive thing, not having to work within two jurisdictions. The city of Irvine was quite surprised that we were going to do that and they were interested in having the race back. So that was one of the reasons we proposed going back to that course because we honestly do believe that that course is a easier course to manage. However, I do think that this is a workable course, but beyond that, if it's not a workable course, I'm disappointed that we never got the chance to sit down in a post-event briefing last June and say, okay, that course isn't working. What can we do as a city staff, working with the management of this event, to make this event work? What can we do? Is there another option? Can we go out and back on Back Bay Drive? Can we, I mean, we, there's a, you know, I, I wake up at three o'clock in the morning designing courses for different events. That's just, you know, what I do. I, I could think of a thousand different ways to design this course if that one's not acceptable. This is part of putting on special events. I wish we'd have had that opportunity. I'd like to have that opportunity, but I do still think that this course is a viable course. Rather than getting into the minutia of it, I mean, I don't think that, that's a productive thing.
Mr. Rosansky?
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you touched on that at the end there. It, it seems like a lot of the problem involves Jamboree. There's a lot of ingress and egress. It's a major highway through our city. Is there any way to, to move the course somewhere else, particularly on, and just contain it on Back Bay Drive and in the Back Bay? So we're not shutting down Jamboree, we're not inconveniencing a lot of businesses, Fashion Island, the Hyatt, the Marriott, Sea Island, all those different residential communities and just kind of keep it on Back Bay Drive? Is that, is that a possibility?
I believe that it is, but this is again, I mean, my response, I'm not trying to be evasive. I think this is where our company, the volunteer crew, the city staff works in concert to come up with what's an appropriate course. I believe it is. I, I believe there's a variety of different options. If you look at.
So you feel that you can fully contain your race on Back Bay Drive and not have to use the other Fashion Island?
I think that would be difficult, but it's worth exploring.
I didn't say whether it was difficult. I said, is it achievable?
Yes, it is achievable. Believe me, part of this process has been, as you're probably aware, people have suggested about a hundred different courses as part of their passion for the event. But again, I, I, I think anything is possible, but it just has to be worked through and this is what, I mean, it happens on every event. And the last week I've had.
And between now and your event is on May twenty-first, I believe, is, do you feel like you have enough, actually, there's another event going on in town. Think about that. It's on the other side of the bay, Relay for Life. But do you feel that between, I mean, it's two months from now, a little less than two months, is there enough time to develop a, a proper plan?
Yes.
And do you, you know, I, I've talked to the staff extensively. I've, I've met with you. And I could see that, you know, you have a passion for what you do, but I could see that there's also been numerous requests made by the staff to have things done and they didn't feel that those things were being done on a timely basis. Are you prepared to meet the demands of the staff, the demands of the city and the demands of our permit process without question?
Yes.
And, and the money that's owed, the seven hundred and whatever dollars, are you, are you willing to write a check for it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Caress from the city council?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, just, Mr. Caress, Mr. Councilman Nichols has a, has a question.
I think it's somewhat of a misunderstanding on some of this, but it, it does seem like a terrible shame that this event isn't going on. I'll, I'll have to say that for sure. And it would seem to me that possibly one side of Jamboree could be used or something like that, which would allow full ingress and egress out of the hotel and, and I, it might accomplish the total goal of this. And, and right now, you're going under the bridge at Jamboree, are you not, with the bicycles and then coming back that way? I mean, excuse me.
With the bridge?
No. Oh, in the old course. You went under Jamboree, didn't you, at the bridge?
No, they were on University Drive.
Oh, they were on University Drive.
University Drive, which turns into Jamboree.
Okay, I misunderstood. I've taken the other on bicycle and I, I, it seems to me you're doing this on a little more than a lane width without a, a dramatic amount of problems. You're doing that on your run course.
Correct.
So I, I certainly think this can be worked out. I thought when I first saw the first letter that went out from the city that it didn't indicate that we were doing the best job we could, but I, I would certainly like to see this continue.
Thank you. We agree.
Mr. Caress, Councilman Rosansky has.
If we were to decide to continue this to our next meeting, would you be able to develop a plan within two weeks?
We'd have to work with the city staff on it. I mean, these things can't be done independently.
Well, there's only two months left, so.
Well, the, the answer is yes, but the only way it will, I don't know when your next meeting is.
Are you willing to move it to a different date to give more time to accomplish?
I think that would be, how do I answer this? Of course, we're, we, we would prefer not to. I'd prefer to work with the city staff in trying to come up with an appropriate course, but it's only going to happen if we work together. It's not going to happen if we propose a course and it goes to them and it comes back. It has to be a joint effort. I don't need to be critical, but, but that's the only way these, this is going to happen quickly.
Well, again, our city policy is to not.
I understand that.
Prepare your plan.
I'm not asking to be prepared. People prepare.
And to not draw it up.
I'm not asking that either.
Our policy is that you propose a plan, you have a traffic engineer, wave his wand over it, stamp it and submit however many copies the city wants with the appropriate fees and, and I, you know, I don't have, I can go on and on, but I think you know the, the, the routine. Do you think that you can accomplish that in a short amount of time?
I do not. I, I, I think that, I, I just don't think, given the current environment, that that's, I, I think the only way this is going to work out is if the staff works with our company and, and with, if they prefer, if that's not the policy, then I, I just don't, I mean, spending whatever sum of money, and these, the traffic plans are expensive, to propose something that may be rejected, I, I don't know that that's, I, I, again, I understand that's the city policy, but given the circumstances on this event, I would hope that that might be something that could be worked through. I'd like to agree upon a course and then we'll pay for the traffic plan. I'm, I'm fine with that, but to propose a course and spend, you know, ten to fifteen thousand dollars on a traffic control plan that may in fact be rejected, I just don't, I think that's a foolish investment, given the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Thank God the volleyballers didn't understand. Thank God the volleyballers didn't understand that they had already had the courts yanked out of Corona Del Mar. We wouldn't have courts there today. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Nichols, that's not appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Kress. Okay, what is the, we're closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the City Council. What is the mood of the council? Questions, discussion, whatever?
I can start out. Actually, I talked one time a year ago to Mr. Kress and one time this year, and I had one comment to make to him this year, and that was, prepare a traffic control plan and submit it to the city. And I think Mr. Kress said it correctly, based upon the information that was presented tonight, and I think it was done professionally and without rancor nor personal. It didn't leave us a lot of choice, but I'm going to go back to a letter dated, first of all, the information presented in the PowerPoint was, after the race last year, there was information communicated to Pacific Sports that, and this goes back 11 months ago, that the current plan didn't work, and they explained the traffic jams at University, and they explained the traffic backup on Coast Highway. And then when, on January 17th, there was a letter provided by mail and email to Mr. Kress that basically said, your traffic control plan was not signed and stamped by a California-registered traffic engineer, and only one copy had been submitted. They needed six copies because it goes to the multiple departments, you know, general services, police department, community services. It has to be reviewed by a number of people. It did not discuss the closure of the southbound SR 73 ramp. It did not detect the changes that, which have occurred on Back Bay Drive near the start-finish, that is, the senior housing project, and it did not show use of water-filled barricades at the start-finish line.
Excuse me for a minute, Mr. Ridgeway, this is when they were proposing originally to use Route 1, which was the old route?
I understand.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need to differentiate between the two routes.
Correct, but, so then they sat down with staff, and they came in with, and they didn't show an insurance certificate. Then later, after they had meetings, they go back to a February 7th letter, again, rejection, and the same issues. And the issue was that the, there was no plan signed by a registered traffic engineer. Six copies, again, were not presented, and the traffic plan didn't show the SR 73 off ramp at University. I don't know how many times staff has to say to the applicant, here is what we need, and I quite candidly had that same telephone conversation with Mr. Kress, that you do need a traffic control plan, and they kept, and I know they switched plans. They didn't want to spend the money on a plan. That was fairly obvious. I think the race clearly has merit. I think there is a lot of good people in it, but I think Mr. Kress, after February 7th rejection, decided instead of, I didn't know he met with Mr. Rosansky, and my hat's off to you for doing that. I think that was appropriate action. What really happened, it went to the daily pilot, and it went to an email, basically an email tree to each one of us, and I can say some of those letters were very personal against staff, extremely. And that was objectionable and quite candidly contrary to the best interests of your entire event. I was offended by some of those emails. Mr. Kress, if there is a way to do this, and it is, work with staff, and it does mean you will have to spend money on a traffic plan, I do agree with Mr. Rosansky, and I agree with you. There probably is a way to make this work, but I don't think it's going to happen in a short period of time because there are so many people involved, not the least of which is a registered traffic engineer, and you're going to have to sit down and draw out a plan. So I'd like to see the event continue. I think you're going to have, it appears you're going to have a one-year hiatus, and perhaps you can come back bigger and better in your 30th year, and I'm sure you'll get the support as long as you comply with everything that's been requested. There were a number of other things that weren't complied with, but I'm just going to the bigger issue.
Mr. Ridgeway is our policeman, a certified traffic engineer?
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you.
Let Mr. Ridgeway complete his comments, and then you can-
This isn't about a Fashion Island that has, is a ghost town at 6:45. I don't know if that's AM or PM, but it could be either one, except for Christmas. But this is about road closure. This is about safety. This is about, you know, we only need one bicyclist to get hit by some irate person or somebody who's not watching and have a severe injury or, God forbid, a death. Then everybody's going to say, what, why didn't you sit up there, Mr. Council, and control this? This is not about Fashion Island. This is about a road closure, a road closure of one of our major arterials coming into this city. There's Jamboree and MacArthur. And it's also about Coast Highway, back up there. It's also about getting an encroachment permit from Caltrans at University. None of that happened. So this project, this event needs a lot more work. I do agree it needs a lot more cooperation. I'm sure that our, the city side was, it was difficult, but I do think there probably is some way to create a bicycle route that is safe and not disruptive to the entire community, both residential and commercial.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Curry?
First of all, I appreciate the many sincere comments of the people who support this race, and the gentleman who came up and suggested an alternative route, even Mr. Billings suggested alternative routing, and I think at the end, so did Mr. Kress. The one thing that is clear through this entire process is that the previous route through 2003, and the current route that was used for the last two years, has been overtaken by residential growth, by the placement of citizens in our community. It is not reasonable to expect that the Bayview Senior Housing, Villa Point, Sea Island, Harbor Cove, Park Newport, the Colony Apartments, among others, shall simply shut down to allow for this event. Now, I'm one of the guys who believes that if you put a couple of people in the room and they're focused on sincerely solving the problem, they'll come out with a solution. And I think there probably is a route in this community that can accommodate a triathlon. We're certainly doing one at Crystal Cove. And I'm confident that this time next year, if people work in good faith, we'll have a route, and we'll have a project, and we'll have a race that people will be, can be proud of, and will be safe for the participants. Now, it's not relevant in my mind that Fashion Island is a ghost town at 6:00 in the morning because if this event were wholly contained within Fashion Island, we wouldn't be having this conversation, but it's not. It's on Jamboree, and it's causing serious disruption in the community. I would, again, as I say, commend the people who spoke sincerely in support of this event, and I appreciate how passionate and enthusiastic you are about the event, but I would also echo Councilman Ridgeway's comments that many of the emails that I received were in less positive vein. They were clearly incited by people who were given wrong information, frankly, and they were parroting it back, and you may be assured that that was not helpful to the case. I also think it's not helpful to the case to think that you can stick the city for a $700 bill and expect that you can do business with us. That's simply not tolerable on behalf of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, Councilmember Diggle?
Yes, I have a question for the city attorney. Is the permit before us for course number two?
Yes, that's my understanding. That was the second application that was made.
And as the city's legal representative, do you believe that there's sufficient facts presented to the city council to uphold the denial of this permit?
Yes.
Thank you. The way that I see this, I think triathlons are an inherently good thing, and I think it's wonderful that you're all working out and staying healthy. I know I try to do that myself. And one of the things that I hope you can appreciate, though, is that our residents don't live hum-drum lives, and on a Sunday morning, they want to go play tennis, and they're playing golf, and they're going to church, and they're going to breakfast, and all these types of things. And many of them probably aren't aware of your event. I mean, we have so much going on, it's not as if they're going to come down to the curb and watch your event. But when they do become aware of it is when they encounter a closure and they're inconvenienced. And I have seen irate motorists firsthand, and it's really something that we are eager to avoid. What's most compelling to me is what Sergeant Johnson had to say, and this is the public safety of Newport Beach talking, and he has told us that this event is unsafe. And I have also heard this from participants. I know triathletes have participated, and they've told me, you know, weaving around these parking garages up around Fashion Island is not a safe condition. And so it may be that in another year, a more acceptable course can be worked out, but the burden of doing that is not on our city staff to design that. That is our policy, and that's, it's the applicant, and we see it from the Orange County Marathon and all the other applicants, they do accept that, our policy, and they do design these courses. So I hope that in a future year, the applicant will be able to design a course that's acceptable and safe to our public safety and to our recreation staff. That would be my position on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Selich?
I think the only solution to this, in my opinion, is to contain the course in Back Bay Drive, and I'm really surprised that the race organizers haven't come forth and, just seeing the volume of correspondence that's taken place and the issues that are raised, but it's true that he said tonight that it could be designed to work on Back Bay Drive, that he wouldn't have come forward earlier and made that proposal. Puts us in the awkward position of having to deny the permit because there's not enough time to design a course to have the event this year. It's not a good thing to be put in that position, and I don't know why the race sponsors didn't come forward earlier and make a proposal to contain it on Back Bay Drive. It clearly solves virtually every problem that we're talking about here. We wouldn't be having this discussion. So, I mean, if it doesn't happen this year, I would hope that if they want to do it next year, that to take a look at that and come up with a race plan that solves all these problems. And to me, it's pretty clear that if it can be done on Back Bay Drive, that that would solve everything.
I'd like to make you, Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make two comments. We had a, our ex-mayor, John Heffernan, on a wide-open road supposedly, had a terrible accident on a bike, and he was cut off by a truck who wanted to turn through an alley and broke, what, six ribs and punctured a lung and just about everything on it. Now, we're not, no such accident has occurred here in spite of the fact that these guys are racing, you know? They're in a much more liable condition to get hit. We have much higher liabilities on Coast Highway through Corona Del Mar on the bikes. The Corona Del Mar Christmas walk, and the way it's causing people to have to shut down their lives during that day to get in and out of their homes because everything has taken over, is just quite a bit worse than what we're talking about here. I do believe that this is an event, like many other events, that we seem to make them work okay. Look at the parade that we hold down on Balboa Island. I mean, that ties up that strip there for a couple hours, and there's an awful lot of people that want to get on and off Balboa Island, and we seem to accommodate that. So I think this is a matter of a will on our part, and I, again, question whether, I think if we said we'd like to make this happen, there'd be no problem. It'd go on and it'd work out fine. I think this is a case where we've made the arbitrary decision that for some reason, we don't like this one. It doesn't make enough money, or it doesn't give us a high enough facial profile or something. I think it's a good event. I think it's a very historic event. It's obvious that this is improving. It's certainly something that I think helps our community, not hurts it. I think it'd be great to have it during the centennial year when we're celebrating all these other things, and it's a, it's a good event. It certainly makes as much sense as putting a triathlon along the bluff down there at, along PCH. I mean, it's, you have to shut down half a highway there and all kinds of things. So I, my comment is, is I think it could be made to work, is you just have to ask that it be done, and that it would be done.
Thank you. Okay, what is the pleasure of the city council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, again, even Mr. Kress agrees that we don't have much choice. I think, you know, I could make a motion to continue this thing for one year. That doesn't really do any good, but I do, I will make the public comment. I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the denial. However, I'm going to ask staff and Mr. Kress to get together during the next few months and start to carve out a new route, and Mr. Kress knows, as I explained to him, the, again, I now will use properly, the Marathon spent like $55,000, almost $60,000 for their traffic plan. You will have to, again, the city has changed, as Mr., the mayor said earlier. We've gone from what was $60,000 to $83,000, and newer buildings in areas that weren't there. So again, I'll make a motion to support the denial. However, I am also with that comment, saying to staff, work with Mr. Kress, and let's see if we can have a resurrected triathlon in the year 2007.
Any discussion on the motion? Please vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
The staff and Mr. Kress, I hope, can meet together to work out a route, sometimes early this year, for next year. Next item on the agenda is item, wait a minute. Next item on the agenda is public comments. For items that are not on the agenda. Council? Public comments.
Well, I'll just wait. I'll sit down because I don't want the clock to start, you know? If you want me to sit. I haven't been here in a while, so I have a few things, you know?
I can understand.
We've missed you, Dolores.
I'm sure you have, Councilmember Ridgeway, and I've missed you, and I am going to miss you in the future.
Thank you.
I will.
Thank you.
In six minutes?
Seven, I can't remember.
All right. Public comments.
Okay, hi. My name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. First of all, in regards to the controversy going on in our community over the 50-meter pool, what I would like to do is have, is put this in your little think cap, okay? Your little think hat, Mr. Mayor, okay? All right? And I would like you to consider the fact that up at Newport Coast, across from Sage School, there is Coyote Canyon, that you have a special committee that meets to discuss what we'll do with that in the future, and I think that a perfect opportunity at this point would be to start discussion on an aquatic center up there. And you could have a 50-meter pool, you could arrange for parking, that would host all the different types of facilities. Currently, at the YMCA in Santa Ana Heights area, supposedly you cannot physically fit the 50-meter pool. I have a neighbor down the street that's working on spearheading a campaign to fix the Corona Del Mar pool- the Corona del Mar pool, the Marion Burgeson Pool. So that's going to be going on. But in the meantime, again, you're limited with the parking and the events that you want to do. So in essence, what would really be nice is if you could go to a whole new place and do the footprint that you want, and make it work for our community, and get the traffic out of the other areas that are already so congested. Secondly, rumor has it that 1510 West Balboa Boulevard, which is the Palms, the three-story, nine-unit apartment building, one block away from Narcanon, one block away from Newport Elementary School, will be supposedly another alcohol and drug recovery home on the peninsula. Yay! I don't understand. There's something about clustering, there's something about people's homes, there's something about something. And I know we had discussions, I know we hired attorneys, but in the meantime, nothing has changed for those people down there. It's more than a residential unit, it's more than six, okay? It's apartments. And it's going to be right next to whatever we're going to decide tonight on Marina Park also. So I would think there should be some type of a land use permit that has to be issued or something that has to be done. And if you want to talk about traffic, and if you want to talk about contingency plans that haven't been done, I can't wait for the traffic to start on Dover and the Mariners' Mile Gateway Project, Dover and PCH. Because you want to talk about the triathlon that you just shut down? Oh, my God. Wait till that nightmare starts. You didn't even get a plan for dirt removal out of the planning commission. That still has to be established. And second, I always, third or fourth, whatever, fourth. And lastly, I always thought that in the past, we always recorded who did the seconds. Maybe we don't. Oh, okay. So I just find it interesting that most of these are going to be either you, Mayor Ridgway, or Mayor Rosansky will make the motion, and then one of you two will probably make the second on controversial issues, because again, it is an election year. Thank you very much.
Dolores, I'd like to think I've made all the motions for the last seven years, and you.
And you know what? People don't realize, I like term limits, but I hate term limits, because you've spent, I don't know, six or eight years on the planning commission and eight years on the council. That's fifteen years of knowledge that we're not going to have anymore, and I'm really going to miss you. Thank you.
Dolores, I don't think you have to worry. I believe he'll come down and comment at every meeting.
No.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of the city engineer?
Sure.
As most of you may know, the Coyote Canyon is a landfill. And Steve, can you comment about the appropriateness of excavating for a swimming pool for young people on a landfill site?
I think that this is, we can't get into discussions like that.
But there's about an eight-acre clean piece in the middle of it.
No, there's a knoll that was set aside for the clubhouse if they ever put a golf course in there. But is there anybody else who'd like to have a public comment?
I don't know if this is appropriate. My name's Jerry Chang again.
Sure. As long as it's a non-adjunct item.
It is, well, I guess it depends on how you would categorize it. It does relate to the triathlon. I just wanted to say, you guys made comments about the emails. I'm probably in large part due to, you know, the nasty emails that you got. I'm young, I'm into technology, I run technology companies, and I let people know on the Internet, you know, that we're trying to support a triathlon. So I apologize for any of the yahoos that don't know what we're trying to do here, send you nasty comments. And if that, you know, if that led to some of the negativity, I know no one in this room has done that. I know the people in my organization would never do something like that. I apologize for that. We cannot control, you know, young children on the Internet looking at what we post and making those inappropriate comments. And, you know, I'm really sorry that you voted that down, because I know that there's going to be, the race may not continue anymore, because when the support dies after one year, it's really hard, especially, you know. But I appreciate all your consideration, and everything sounded reasonable. Thanks.
Thank you. Public comments on non-adjunct items. Mr. Pointy's, I think, now's your time. You have five minutes.
I mean, thinking, I don't want to waste time.
Excuse me, three minutes. You have three minutes.
I don't want to waste time. Like I said, it's just regarding housing authorities at Coronado South Apartments in Newport Beach.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't get the question you were asking about a housing authority at Coronado.
I do not have a question. I have terrible issues, and I have a few friends that actually live there, which could be called my neighbors, that we have terrible issues at Coronado South Apartments under the United Dominion, Dominion Real Estate Agency.
Okay, the city of Newport Beach does not have a housing authority, and the city manager, would you like to comment on?
Yes, I think if he gives me his name and telephone number, I'll have somebody from the police department contact him tomorrow and can talk directly to him about any issues.
I already know Chuck, he's the lieutenant, what, chief commander of Newport Police I believe in Orange County, we have something, the Orange County Fair Housing Authorities.
The Fair Housing Council is a group, and the city has a contract with them to administer our fair housing programs.
I cannot hear you, ma'am, it's the keyboard.
The city does have a contract with the Fair Housing Council, and so if you contact them, they should be able to help you with your problem.
Can you give him your card so that he can call you tomorrow and find out how to do that? Okay, if you will contact Sharon tomorrow, she will give you how you can contact the Orange County Fair Housing Authority to file your complaint.
I will proceed that, and you guys will meet again next Tuesday, correct?
We meet the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to have a public comment? Closed public comments. The next item on the agenda is the oral reports from the City Council on committee activities. First, the Jeep Huck, General Plan Update Committee, Councilmember Selig.
No report, Mr. Mayor. We haven't had a meeting, but I'll just say again that we're having the general plan outreach meetings that await this center, April 1st, Saturday, two sessions at 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And anyone that's interested should come on out and take a look at what we have to present at that meeting.
Thank you. Local coastal plan, Councilmember Ridgway?
Yes, thank you. We had a meeting last Tuesday, went for more over two hours, and our next meeting is scheduled for April 4th at 3:00 PM at the fire conference room here at City Hall.
The Mariners' Joint Use Library, we are going to be having the dedication and opening ceremony for the Mariners' Joint Use Library on April 21st, or excuse me, it's April 20th, at 11:00 AM, and it will be on the park side of the library. It's a beautiful facility, and we are very proud to have it completed and opened on that date. So everybody show up that wants to be a part of the dedication ceremony. You will have to find a place on the grass next to probably five or 600 students, because they are coming from next door at the school to help participate in this opening. So that's the Mariners' Joint Use Library. Centennial Committee, we've already had a number of centennial discussions earlier today, so I'll pass over that. The Marina Park Planning Committee, we will discuss that on the next item. Other committee activities that members on the committee.
EQUAC met, I believe, after this last meeting, and we went over the General Plan EIR, which hasn't gotten out yet, and I guess it isn't going to be for, what, another week, right?
It should be out by early next week. I believe that it was the.
The main book is out, though, right? That summary book?
No.
Well, it's not to you yet, but it's in printing, I think.
The draft general plan is being printed right now, and that was the presentation that the EQUAC received, was on the proposals and the plan, not on the EIR yet, but EQUAC will be reviewing that as soon as it's available.
Yeah, I skipped over the Newport Coaster Advice Committee. Councilmember Curry?
No report on that one, but I will report on the Facilities Financing Committee, which met yesterday.
Okay.
And looked at both at the financing options for the improvements to Santa Ana Heights, which will be funded through redevelopment funds, and also laid out a comprehensive alternatives for the city's overall facilities over the next 20 years, and various alternatives for how those can be addressed and provided for. They're aiming to deliver a report to the council prior to the 1st of May, and the next meeting will be on April 10th.
Thank you. Any other council members? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Selig.
I guess I should report on the site, City Hall Site Location Committee. We had our meeting the week before last, and the committee's continuing to evaluate sites and continuing to call down, if you will, the number of sites. I think we're down to about maybe four sites that are still looking viable, out of the original list of about 13 or 14, and the committee will be meeting next week, and we'll continue going in that direction.
Thank you. Can we have the next item as the planning commission agenda?
Mayor, members of the council, to report on the last planning commission meeting, I will first start by saying I have to admit I wasn't there, because I was with Councilmember Daigle, talking to one of the East Bluff Community Associations.
And thanks for your support up there. I appreciate it very much.
It came out pretty well, I thought.
I think you did a great job.
Thank you. The, there were three items on the agenda, and every single one of them was either continued or removed from calendar, either at the request of applicants or the staff. The first item was continued discussion regarding the Brookfield Homes residential project in the airport area that started hearing several months ago. The applicant did start to put together the necessary documents that would be called for in the proposed general plan policies for residential in that area, and gave the planning commission a presentation on that. I will defer that because the applicant's representative is here to make a few comments specifically on how the applicant views that project to perhaps proceed in the future. And as I noted, the subdivision on Cliff Drive and the consideration of the general plan amendment and pre-annexation zoning for the city's corporation yard portion that is in the city of Costa Mesa was removed from calendar until we can have further communication with the city of Costa Mesa. The item that took the most discussion really was not a regular agenda item, but was one of their additional business items, where they discussed under project status, the scheduling for their hearings for the general plan update and EIR, which are starting April 4th, I believe, at the planning commission level. And there was extensive discussion about how to deal with the volume of work, and it was determined that for the duration of the general plan consideration, that the chairman has altered their regular meeting hour from 6:30 PM to 3:00 PM. And they would do that for the purpose of completing their regular agenda business first, and then moving directly on to the general plan elements as well as the EIR. So that would conclude my report. And as I said, I believe there's someone in the audience that would like to speak on this item. So if, I don't have much to answer questions on, so, since I wasn't there.
Any questions, Patty?
What was the reason for the person talking or wanting to comment on one of the items on the planning commission?
He's here, and I will let him speak. He wants to comment on the Brookfield Homes item.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I won't take long. I know you have a full evening and a full agenda. Philip Bettencourt, 110 Newport Center Drive, on behalf of Dave Bartlett and Brookfield Homes, as well as Fletcher Jones Jr. and Ms. Stephanie Grody, the co-owners of the Scrusen Quail property. The property owners with the applicant have made a decision to take the matter off calendar, at least for the time being, despite the fact that we've made considerable progress in the process requirements that we need to go through. We have obtained an FAA clearance, we have a determination that we're consistent with the airport land use plan for Orange County. All the environmental clearances are complete, and we've obtained more than signatures now from more than two-thirds of property owners in the 135-acre Newport Place Plan Community Amendment. However, this is the first residential land use application north of Bristol, and they've made a decision, at least for the time being, as Mr. Bartlett said to the commission, to wait out the current general plan process, but they remain committed and enthusiastic about their application. But the phone lines are open, the website is up, and we're going to be very good listeners and very good watchers in the months ahead.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate your informing us of that. Let's see, this is receive the oral report. There's no action required on this. Next item of business, what it is, is I'm going to take one more item, and then we're going to take a five-minute break. We've been going about three hours, and I've had a request for a break. Let's do the current business, item 22, which is the Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with EIP Associates for General Plan Update and EIR and Budget Amendment. Staff, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we have been working on this project for quite a long time now, and we are reaching the end. As Ms. Temple said, we have public hearings beginning next week. When this contract was approved in 2003, it was for a little over a million dollars, and that included not only EIP Associates, who are the prime consultant, but also two sub consultants, Urban Crossroads for the traffic work and Applied Development Economics for the fiscal and economic work. And as we have proceeded, as often happens with a project this large, we find that we change meeting schedules, we add the number of meetings we want the consultant to attend. In our case, because of the level of specificity of our land use element and all of the data that needs to be managed for that, and the fact that statistical boundaries don't match with the traffic analysis zone boundaries, that there's an awful lot of disaggregation in making sure that all of that is consistent. We've asked for additional runs of the traffic model, and I expect that there will be a very large number of comments on the draft environmental impact report, and therefore, drafting responses to those comments will be a bigger job than it had been anticipated. So the consultants have given us their best projection of what it will cost to complete the project. Staff has gone over that in detail with the consultant, and we think that their request for an additional $552,131 is appropriate and justified and needed to get the project done.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of the staff?
Yes.
Mr. Selig.
I just have one question. When we authorize this, this will take us with EIP's work projected through the election on the general plan, correct? Or is?
I don't think there is any additional work for EIP after the city council takes action on the plan between that and the election.
Okay. Okay, we'll say through the adoption of the general plan. What about any focused traffic studies that we might have to do? We're going to get into like about four meetings of land use and circulation. If we do some attenuations to, the recommendations have been done so far, and want to go back and do some additional, either a short model run or focus studies or anything, do we have anything budgeted for that?
We have one additional run of the traffic model included.
Okay, so if we undo anything beyond that, then we're going to have to come back and budget a little bit more money than it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Ridgway? Simple question. Basically, this is a time and material with an upset number adding the additional dollars. Is that correct? That's, it doesn't quite read that, but, so if somehow responses are one-third less, the total amount of dollars expended would probably not, would probably not be the 552. Thank you, that's all I needed to know. That's all I needed to know.
Anything else at the council? Are there any, is there any public comments on this item?
I'd like to make one comment.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Nichols. We have somebody coming forward.
I want to applaud Woody. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach and I want to applaud Woody and his company throughout these years because it seems like a long time.
It's been a long time.
He's been a gentleman and he's been wonderful to work with and he's just a great person and all the work has been very thorough and always good answers to questions and time spent with everybody. And also, I want to know if for some reason the general plan doesn't pass, does this include Plan B? Do we have a Plan B or is this it?
Plan B is our existing plan, which is going to be much greater in both in intensity and traffic.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Close the public comments. Mr. Nichols, you had requested an information.
Yeah, my question is, is that we had talked about putting a traffic study in on Corona del Mar with the restriping of that and contracting a little bit on the medians that would give us six lanes so we could use a variety of ways and I think that would be worthwhile doing. The traffic is below, I believe, what the general plan allows.
I believe a motion was made and it failed for lack of second to discuss that item in our last discussion. Have I remembered that right? So I don't believe that the council directed the staff to do that study. Thank you. Is, can I, what's the council pleasure on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion for two. I'll second it.
Second it. Any discussion? Please vote.
With Councilmember Nichols abstaining, the motion carries.
I realize you people have been very, very patient on Marina Park, but there are some needs that need to be taken care of in the next five minutes. So we're going to take a break. We'll come back when the hour hand gets up to 12. I take it back, when the minute hand gets to 12. Okay, our next item on the agenda. Did you leave your skateboard outside?
Yeah. I got my Etna and something, though.
What did you say you were proposing?
We're actually coming up, we're deteriorating here. Let's get back to business, gentlemen and lady. Mr. Kiff, are you going to give the staff report on this item?
Yes, he is. I don't want it. He just likes hanging out.
It's a great project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This item is about Marina Park and the future use scenarios. And just a reminder for the folks at home, last week you heard an item on park closure. This is, this is a step away from that. This is what happens next. What's a potential future use for the park? I'm just, actually, some lights there, sorry.
Please. Leave the backlights on and the frontlights on. There you go.
That should work. What I'm going to do is not spend a lot of time running through a bunch of slides. I only have about eight slides and those are indeed the eight different proposals that the Marina Park Planning Committee, Mayor Webb and Mr. Ridgeway served on that as well as about 14 other folks. These are the eight proposals that they recommended come forward to you for consideration. And tonight, you have a couple of options before you as to what to do. Staff is not recommending that you pick an option. They're recommending, we're recommending that you look at them, offer your comments. Give us some direction too on whether or not some of the, you'd like some of these to be presented more formally to you, whether you'd like two or three of them to be fleshed out a little bit more in terms of their concepts. And I'll close with that slide that kind of gives you those options. And talking with some of the folks in the audience, you're going to get some more detailed presentations about some of these during the five-minute public comment time. I'm going to run through them in the order that they were presented by, to the committee so there's no preference on staff's part. These are just the order that the committee heard them. The first one is the Balboa Aquatic Park Plan and this was presented by the Harbor Commission. You can see the diagram there on the left. This includes a Marina element. I'm not going to speak much on it because the Harbor Commission folks are here and they're going to talk more about it. This is the quote-unquote "full-service Marina" plan and this was presented by the Marine Committee of the Newport Harbor Chamber of Commerce. And you can see this is a little bit more of a specific Marina use. This is the, we call this the Passive Park Plan and this was submitted by a representative of the Balboa Peninsula Point Association. And you can see basically it's turf and trees and a new access road there with the removal of, obviously of the coaches. Fourth in the lineup is the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Plan. This is the same plan that PBNR submitted as a part of the 2000-era look that your council actually issued an RFP to examine. So PBNR included a commercial element there because they believe that was a requirement of the submission in 2000 and they didn't change that submission, but this is something the committee heard and forwarded. This is what's called the Window to the Bay Plan by Protect Our Parks. And Protect Our Parks folks are here as well, so I'm not going to speak any, much more about that because they're going to tell you more about this plan. This was a plan presented by Craig Rager, who is a committee member, and Craig had a concept of encouraging, at least during Christmas Boat Parade, the series of stands that would allow people to park nearby and also enjoy the boat parade. This is a plan submitted by Mike Palletts and Daryl Grif. Mike operates the Balboa Inn and Mike had a concept called cottages on the bay where he would actually renovate the existing coaches and rent them out on a nightly or weekly use so they would be visitor-serving, not residential.
Dave, I think actually Mike did run the Balboa Inn. He is now the manager-owner of La Cava.
La Cava, correct. This is a concept we called the Small Vessel Trailer Launch Plan and that, it's just a modification on some of the others, but it, Mark Wambel, who is a, came to the committee meetings and made this presentation, wanted to make sure that there was in the, in his plan, a concept that people could actually access the boat, the bay and launch smaller type vessels that are trailered because he was pointing out that the only place you can do that at now is Newport Dunes. So those are the eight and again, with what now, you could ask for more detailed presentations on one or more, direct some of those folks to come back with a more detailed proposal themselves. I guess the first one would just be a, directly a presentation. The second one would be to actually flesh it out more. You could actually certainly ask that the committee, the committee be reformed or a new committee formed to refine or revise the plans, rule some of the concepts you'd liked or didn't like in or out, and then ask city staff or a consultant to do some type of feasibility analysis relating to permit, permitting, sequoia coastal or financial on one or more of the plans. So with that, that's the end of my presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Thank you. Thanks, Dave, for that presentation. Hopefully you have one more slide in there. I'd like to make a couple of comments and I'll make them brief like you did. First of all, most of the people in the committee know I live one block from this spot and I've been on this. No, you're going to need those lights out, that any other one over the screen. There are two plans and Don was in those meetings that have really quite a bit of support and they're both a win-win for the citizens on the peninsula and that is the Protect Our Parks Plan, the larger park plan, and the Harbor Commission, two of the members of Harbor Commission. And being an elected official, of course, elected officials like to meet compromises and I thought those two plans were so closely aligned, there was a request to have the two architects meet and if you would, Dave, at least a compromise plan was prepared that has more of the POP plan in it than it does of the Harbor Resources Plan. If you have a, that on your slide projector, perhaps you could show that.
I do have a couple of other plans and with the understanding to the rest of the council that when, when I notified the committee that I was preparing this, a couple of the committee members came up and said, hey, we have revisions. So I want to be clear with you that these are revisions and certainly the revision that Councilmember Ridgeway notes is one that was provided to us, but these previous eight that I showed you were the actual things that the committee saw. So this was a slide, I think the slide that Councilmember Ridgeway is talking about.
If you see it... If you see it, it overlays on top of the existing POP plan. I won't make many comments. But the Marina component is a horseshoe moving in. It has the same amount of boats. Again, it's the smaller boats, the 50s and 40s. As you know, the harbor, many of those boats are being displaced with larger boats. And you can see it overlays on top of the buildings that were in that plan. So I have no further comments. Actually, I do have one comment. I think everybody in the audience should know. I have been in discussions with Southern California Edison. They are going to close and dismantle that station there this year, by the end of this year. So, which is next to the tot lot. I suspect if anything, it probably would, if it's not used. For some type of use, it could be parking.
Does the city own that property?
No, it's owned by Edison.
So we would have to acquire the property?
Yes. It's next to the pump station, the new sanitation district pump station. I think it probably has...
I have a question of Dave, if I may. In reading the staff report and looking over the original charge for the committee, the presentation of the potential future use scenarios was item F here. It says the committee shall have the following duties, and it was A through F. And what you presented is F. What happened to A through E?
Mayor Proton Marzansky, let me go over those A through E briefly for you and for the folks at home. A was to develop goals for the future use of the property, guidelines for the planning process. B was to gather and consider...
Can we take them one at a time?
Sure.
Did they do that, or do you have some of that?
In A, the committee formed a subcommittee. And they actually prepared the goals for future use. And the full committee, when at its last meeting, didn't adopt those. But the subcommittee did work on those. Those are actually up on the website if folks want to see that.
And why didn't they adopt them, or?
I'm recollecting back to September now. But it's my recollection that the committee said, you know what? The most important thing about this is just to forward the eight reuse options up. So let's just do that and let the council decide what they want to do next.
So they kind of ignored their duties? Is that what you're telling me?
They punted to...
Punted, I guess is a good...
They punted to council, quite candidly.
Okay, what about B?
On B, they actually did this, and this is on the website as a part of their committee packet. If folks at home want to look at that, on our website under Projects, then Marina Park, they can find everything about B, which was relating to Thailand's restrictions, general plan, LCP, zoning regulations, coastal active water quality. On C, they did that as well in terms of just gathering that information and preparing it, looking at it, and then it was put on the website. That was relating to the needs of Newport Beach for park and rec facilities, boating facilities, et cetera. D was to research similar properties and identify successful examples. A few of the committee members made presentations about those similar properties. It wasn't a formal process. It was, if anyone had some in mind, they were proposed to the committee and talked about briefly.
But you don't have any of that to present to us in trying to make our decision as to which of these scenarios are maybe a better scenario?
I don't. And again, that's not something the committee asked us to do, asked that the council look at. E was to develop a plan for gaining public input on future use of the property. Subcommittee did that as well. The full committee decided not to adopt it. They thought that the public input at that point with notice public meetings was appropriate.
Okay, so we're left with F as what you presented. It seems like all those proposals could have just been presented to the city council directly instead of going through the committee. And I don't see what the committee has really accomplished here other than to bring us A proposals that were just presented to them.
I guess in some defense of the committee, they spent a lot of time with each of the eight proposals. And yes, your council could have heard those same presentations as well. But there was a fair amount of dialogue. And probably in the four different committee meetings we met, there were at least two or three proposals at each meeting that took up an hour of time. So they were pretty good about listening to the proposals.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the city council? Okay, it would be my suggestion that we open the public hearing and let the various different proponents of these items or options come forward and speak on them.
Mayor?
Could you give us your name again, please?
Yeah, sure. I'm Mr. Panich Fuentes.
Right.
I believe this is a serious item on the agenda. This is my first time in this city council meeting. I just would like to say pretty clearly, I don't have a degree. Even though so, I believe it is terrible what is happening in the city with these plans, like the library libraries, so-called. Seems to me, with all due respect and honesty, that these associates right here, I don't even, I don't really even hear their, how they go by. They're just selling out the city. They're selling out their architectural plans. They're completely past to date of what architecture is of the truth. And I say this because in summertime, a lot, a lot and a lot of people, citizens from all around the world come to Newport Beach. And I know that because I hang out, I've been hanging out on the beach for a long time. You see them, Spaniards, Swedish people, all around the world. And they always wonder, why is there so inequity in what the balance of the city and the county is? I, just to make, just to prove that, I last day on the, there was two Australian ladies. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, would somebody like to come forward and discuss any one of the options that were presented? Mr. Beek?
Obviously, nobody wants to be first. My name is Alan Beek, 2007 Highland. I'm the Secretary of SPON, Stop Polluting Our Newport. And I'm here to report that I went and looked in the minutes, and it was just almost two years ago, our April 2004 meeting, that we endorsed a plan presented by Steve Barnard that was very similar to the window-on-the-bay concept. And we endorsed that concept. Of course, the details have changed a little bit over the years. And I think the details should keep changing. And not speaking for SPON, but for myself, I would think that the city should do a good deal more in the way of public outreach, either a mailer with the waterbells or a website in which you try to find out what people are actually going to use if it's there. You say, should we have a place where you can rent a boat and go rowing? Oh, yes, that'd be a nice thing to have. Well, will you ever go rent a boat and go rowing? And, well, maybe not many of them would. Would you like to have a park there where you can go and have a picnic and look at the bay? Oh, that's a good thing to do. Well, how often will you go to the park? Well, maybe once a year. I think those are the questions that need to be resolved. And there are a few things, of course, like the visiting boat slips, which they themselves will not use. But they think there should be a friendly harbor, that our yachtsmen go up and down the coast, and other people going up and down the coast should find a welcoming place here. I would also like to put in one particular plug of my own and my area of expertise, which is building sandcastles. If you go to that beach and go down to where the wet sand is, when the tide is halfway down, where you build sandcastles, it is yuck. That beach needs to be reworked with a dredger and filtered. And the mud put in a barge and taken out, dumped out at sea, where we dump mud. And the rocks and the shells put in trucks and taken off someplace that need clean fill dirt. And the beach turned into nice sand that kids can play in and build sandcastles in without slashing their fingers on broken shells. And that's the extent of my contribution. Thank you.
That's not one of the beaches your dad dredged in way back in the beginning of time? Is that one of the beaches your dad was part of the dredging for?
No, I don't think he ever had anything to do with it.
Okay. Can you, there you go. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce myself to members of the city council, and especially Mr. Curry, our newest member. Welcome to the fray. I'm Dr. Patricia Frosthalm and reside at 1-805-West Bay Avenue. I'd like to also interject and say I was delighted to see Mayor Webb at the lifeguard tryouts. My grandson Marcus John didn't make the cut, but he stayed the course. He'll try again.
That was a tough swim that day.
Recently, while delivering invitations to our annual beach potluck at the bay, I tripped on the curb and broke my hip. And I'm recovering nicely with a Cobalt Coromium replacement. That's why I have the walker. The residents on Bay Avenue and Woody and I are strong for keeping the area as natural as possible. No big yacht dockings, please. The hand-launching boats are less polluting. And the public enjoys driving here, parking, and carrying the small boats to the water, kayaks, windsurfers, daisies, transporting folks to their moorings. It's a safe beach for families with small children. We've lived on Bay Avenue many years. And during that time, people have asked us if they're allowed to go to the beach in front of the trailers. We always tell them it's open to the public, as all beaches are supposed to be in California. But people still do not use it. It looks private and forbidding. So please, do not delay. Act and do what you must to give back to the people what is theirs to enjoy. The channel is too small to accommodate any more big yachts. We urge you to move forward and adopt the windows-to-the-bay plan. Let us stay as close as we can to the philosophy of the Native Americans. Leave only footprints. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Frosthalm.
I have some of these for the city clerk, some more petitions. I've sent some in, and here's a couple more. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gail Ellis Oates, and I'm here on behalf of the Girl Scout Council of Orange County. And I'd like to thank the parties responsible for their inclusion of the Girl Scouts in the future planning and development of the Marina Park property. The Girl Scout Council of Orange County serves more than 26,000 girls and 12,000 adults through its Costa Mesa headquarters and program centers in various communities in Orange County. Girl Scouts have been active in Newport Beach since 1922. The Girl Scout Council of Orange County urges the Newport Beach City Council to remain resolute and committed to ensuring that Girl Scouts have a continued, permanent, safe, and no-cost location in proximity to our current site. We urge the city of Newport Beach to give the same attention to the Girl Scouts as they've given to the Boy Scouts and the American Legion. The Girl Scout Council of Orange County seeks to negotiate with the city of Newport Beach a long-term, no-cost, 50-year lease for a new Girl Scout program facility in proximity to the current Nave B. Thomas Girl Scout House. That would allow us to continue to develop our long-range property plan and to seek a financial commitment for the new program facility from our Board of Directors. A new Girl Scout program facility is crucial in ensuring that we can continue to offer personal growth and leadership development programs and quality recreational and boating programs for all Girl Scouts and others within Newport Beach and Orange County. There's often a temptation in society to focus on, to focus the most resources on youth who are at risk, are in trouble, and need help. But equal emphasis needs to be placed on preventing children from becoming at-risk or getting into trouble. Whenever public land can be used as a safety net, where children are empowered to become the best they can be, this is a wise use of public property. By responding positively to our request for a commitment for a permanent, safe, and no-cost Girl Scout program facility, everyone will benefit, all of the citizens of Newport Beach, as well as the people interested in the sensitive development of coastal-dependent issues regarding the Marina Park project. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
As far as the Girl Scouts usage is concerned, how many days a week would the Girl Scouts be planning to use that facility?
Currently, it's used almost every day and almost every weekend. But I don't have the exact hours. I'm here in place of the Senior Director of Property, and he would have all of those statistics.
You mentioned your long-range plan. Does that mean the Girl Scouts are planning in their program to, if we provide a site, to build a facility? Or are you expecting the city to build the facility and then just let you use it for free?
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry. There is a long-range property plan, and the Board of Directors has to decide on the financial commitment once they understand what the commitment is from Newport Beach.
Okay. Any other questions from the city council?
I just want to make a understanding. I think you use it in the summertime daily. But I don't believe it's used daily the nine, the other nine months.
After school. I'm sorry, I'm not aware of the exact usage of it. We could get you those statistics, so...
Yeah, after school, it's used, I believe, by the city and/or for their programs.
I apologize if I gave you wrong information.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Comments, please?
I guess we could stay all night and wait for the people that have the plans. Hi, my name is Doris Oden. I live in Newport Beach. I campaigned during the time of Measure L. I was running against Councilmember Heffernan. And 29,000 people voted no on L, and 15,000 people voted yes on L. So there was more people that voted on that issue than voted on anything else. Even Mayor Bronberg, that ran unopposed, didn't get as many votes as those people that voted on L. And I was out there for a long period of time. And that's how I garnered 17,000 votes against an incumbent who got 20,000 votes. And what I heard daily, because I was out daily, was that people, no one ever mentioned that they wanted a commercial Marina. As a matter of fact, my neighbor has a kayak, would like to have another facility in the city of Newport Beach that he could do hand-launch and go out with his son. People up in Newport Coast have little boats and stuff that they want to hand-launch. And there was many people that just thought it would be a park, because that's what people thought it would be. Of course, the way it was written was ambiguous, so it could be anything, as we're finding out. I also have a problem that this is the only park in the city of Newport Beach that's going to have to generate revenue. We have all that property at Bonita Sports Complex that doesn't, you know, generate revenue. So I know we need to make money in the city. But currently, we have $190 million budget. And 66% of that budget is for salaries and benefits of the employees. One would hope that we could still keep a park budget available for the public. So anyway, I am a supporter. And I am in favor of the plan that has been presented and worked on by Mr. Barnard and by Protect Our Parks. That was what I heard people wanted. Now, I can only tell you what I heard because I was truly out there. So thank you very much for your time.
I just want to make a comment. My memory of Mr. Barnard's plan is certainly different than the Protect Our Parks plan. I remember it specifically. He actually had a commercial restaurant on there. Living one block from there, I actually don't support a commercial restaurant. I think both traffic and possible incompatibility of land uses. And there was also a building that was, at that point in time, and I'm sure, everything is evolutionary, seemed to compete with the Newport Aquatic Center and Billy Whitford and his plan. And Billy certainly called me and was certainly very concerned at that plan. So it's not, while it had components that were the same of the POP plan, I just want to make sure that people understand it did have components that, it did have a commercial component to it.
Which plan? I'm sorry, I missed that.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Barnard's.
Okay. Well, the good news, I'm glad you mentioned that, is those components are gone. We've been through three revisions.
Can you imagine that?
Anumance, no, it's...
How long is your presentation, Mr. Billings?
Well, I'd like to keep it, you know, within everyone, to keep it fair for everybody, whatever time limit you've allotted for it, so...
Right now, it's five minutes.
Is that going to be applying for everyone, or should I ask for more time?
I would suggest, because of the importance of this issue, if you feel you need more time to just give the applicant, or not the applicant, but the, give Tom more time.
I'll shoot for five, and then try not to go beyond 10, is that okay?
I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into this, we might as well hear the whole story.
Right, we're interested in, in allowing everybody the time they need to have, but we don't want to get into long, drawn-out discussion at the expense of some of the other...
Okay, I'll try not to do that. I plan to not do that. I just want to move this a little bit, because it might be blocking everything.
Now, Mr. Nichols can't see that, but...
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I, I appreciate you wanting to be on TV, but this is a council presentation.
Which way is it shut?
Well, we need to see it.
Uh, where was it?
Okay. Go ahead, that one.
Either that, or, or in order for the camera to still be able to see it, just put it right at the end of the table there.
Put it where now?
At the end of the table.
At the end of the table, in front of the exit door.
There you go.
So, I'm going to go ahead and, and...
There you go. Is that good? Get that kid?
We can design that. We can design that. Okay.
Let's negotiate where to go.
Okay, we're starting the, the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Tom Billings. Tonight, we're going to talk about...
Can you pull the microphone down to where you...
I'm sorry.
Please.
The future of Marina Park. And the purpose of this whole process, really, is to design a building, to design and build a park that serves all residents of, of Newport Beach. Parks are for the community. They're not for privileged few. No-on-L campaign, which was just mentioned, and we can't forget these wonderful signs, as Ms. Otting pointed out, 30,000 people, 60% of the vote, voted against commercialization of parkland. At that time, it was over a hotel. Since then, that was held in November 4th, our organization, Protect Our Parks, which led the No-on-L campaign, has conducted continuous and extensive community outreach with community associations and organizations to identify the needs and wants of the residents. I think it was Mr. Rosansky was just asking about the process, and in terms of, one of the line items for ad hoc was public outreach, public input. But we've done that, a lot. And that's therefore the three revisions that you're, you're not going to see, you're going to see the most current. But each revision has been a result of, in the last 12 months, public input, feedback that reflect the community's desires. And another example are the Girl Scouts. We've met with the council twice. The Girl Scout Council led, as far as the properties, was led by Tom Olivas. And we've designed their Girl Scout House based on the, the kind of needs that this, this woman just expressed, so...
Tom, is this the most recent plan?
I'm sorry, yeah, the, the handout you have is the most current.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, number one, what did the residents want? The residents wanted views of the bay and access to the bay for kayaking, sailing, small lo, hand-launch craft. They also wanted, in terms of, of the activities on the bay, access to sailing and marine recreation programs. We met with the city as well, Andrea McGuire, and they have a, a desire for expanding their city-sponsored sailing programs. And we've designed for that in our plan. They did not want...
How would you do that, Tom?
How would we do what?
Expand for the, expand, expand for the expanded sailing programs.
Okay, um, let me get into our plan. I'm going to go back to this slide to explain our current, but to answer your question, Leslie, um, well, let me, I'll get to that for you, okay? Let me just go over the modifications that, that have led us to our current version, and I'll then address your answer when I get to the plan. This third revision basically includes the, the following items, which came out of community outreach. One is we relocated the tennis courts to minimize the impact of the view, their impact on the view, to expand them. Two, we modified landscaping, in other words, we, we had less trees to improve the views over the, for more open space. We reduced the size of, of a bit of the compound around the Girl Scout House, but we still allotted for a, a Girl Scout House which they desired, which was around 4,000 to 6,000 square feet. And again, that will be a function of their budget and what, you know, the final layout will be. And, and again, you'll, you'll get to see each one of these elements in a moment. We eliminated the visiting vessel guest slips area to better reflect the unanimous of use of primarily the two major community associations on the peninsula, who, which is Peninsula Point and Newport Babo Community Association, Newport Beach Community Association, which did not want any slips of any kind out there. They wanted, you know, you'll see their plan on the peninsula, they wanted a passive park. And since they're the most sensitive neighbors in the area, we, we, we listened to them. And also, by doing that, we eliminated the last, the second-to-last point, the need to have any beach laws. So, those two factors came into play there. And then finally, this, what you'll see, the revised project reduced our cost estimates, which, as a result of those changes. Here's the view that, that you will see from one angle of our park. In terms of view, there's two, you know, as you're heading either eastbound or westbound, you're going to have these wonderful view corridors out to the bay, and that was like something that's lacking in our harbor. We used to have more of it along Mariners Mile, but it's pretty much gone now, except for when you go by, like, the Sea Scout Base or Ardell's. And this is the last opportunity for that, so that was a high priority. We divided our, our, our plan into three zones, the marine recreation zone, the window zone, and the children's zone. Okay, back to your question, Leslie, which addressed the marine recreation activities. You'll see off to the right there in the marine recreation zone, a sailing aquatic center and a canoe kayak drop-off. What that sailing aquatic center would be, a, a combined city location for storage of their, their satellites and lasers and, and leados, as well as for people that want to store kayaks and canoes. But we didn't want to heavily emphasize storage, because, for example, Billy Whitford's location in NAC, he's full of storage. But, but we felt it more important to have activity going on rather than people just parking their kayaks there. And so, it would be a place, actually, for people also to rent kayaks and canoes. So, all that activity would come out of that location, and then UCI Sailing Center's looking to expand their program for their small sailing. But, you know, definitely, the city sailing programs, sponsored sailing programs would, would, would be a priority there. And again, people can drive in, go down, drop off their canoe without a trailer or anything, they're all hand-launched, and then, and then park their car and go, go enjoy. The other thing about this, this site is it's a destination. It's a destination for people, and we met with Billy Whitford of NAC. He said this would be a wonderful destination for his people, and just a great destination for anybody that's, that's out on the harbor. Out in front of there, you see the floating launch area. Now, that's a change, and I explained earlier, we've retained all the beach, eliminated the visiting slips, and we have what's called a, a launching float. It's really like a dock, but it doesn't have a pier, and it was modeled after Lido Island has a similar arrangement. It still allows for, there's four places people can, can launch their canoes, kayaks, sailboats, but it also, and we haven't extended it, but it can be extended out as a, you know, for a longer tee, for people with electric boats, rowboats, small sailboats to come in and tie up there. So, it's a wonderful facility, they're not expensive to build, and it really serves the purpose. In terms of the, the, the community center, that is a, a future, what we're calling a multi-purpose center, so it could be a lot of different things, but we were thinking more for community classes, anywhere from yoga to music to, to even renting out that space, which is currently available now in, in the, in the small one that you have, which apparently is close to falling down. And then you go into the window zone. The window zone is basically the, the heart of the, the park. It's just this wonderful, open, passive area where people can stroll around the park and picnic. There, there are a couple showers near the beach, but it's just a great place to come down, watch the sunset. And again, we were careful not to, it can be, part of it could be an, an active park, you know, for a, a sports field, but the majority did not want that, they wanted it more passive. The third area on the left is the children's zone, which basically has the basketball courts, the Girl Scout House, which I mentioned, which is a secure compound, you kind of see that circle around it for the girl's security. This is what the council expressed they wanted, and an expanded building, and the fire ring, you can see, that's real special right now. They have a lot of overnighters. And, you know, we met, there were some Girl Scouts here tonight who showed up and they had to go home, but they were here to support us, and, and one of their leaders basically expressed that it actually is used a lot, like, daily, as, as was mentioned, as well as, there's a lot of overnighters. So, they do need a secure compound, and there's some parking off to the left. And then the tot lot is very expanded, used to be up here in the upper right near 16th. It's now in a real secure area down near the beach, and it has a, a zero-depth pool and some nice, you know, features there. So, overall, you know, that kind of explains that part of it. While that's flashing up at you, just kind of a recap of all the features, I just wanted to stress that the importance, again, of the, our outreach, that, our feedback that we got, was that people wanted bay access, they wanted, they wanted to be able to have views of the bay, and they wanted it for the entire public, whether you're in Newport Coast or, or Santa Ana Heights, or Newport, or West Newport. This is a place you can come down to, a unique location, there's no other place like it to, to enjoy waterfront park. So, they definitely wanted it for all residents, not a few, and not for private yacht owners, which a marina would do, and that was strongly expressed. In terms of costs, like I said, that they've been revised a bit, phase, and it would be done in phases, which would help in terms of the capital cost outlay. For example, year one, the, the cost to demo the park and put in utilities and, and the restrooms and the tennis courts is 4.6 million. Phase two, which could happen anytime, it doesn't happen right away. I mean, initially, you could have this great passive park with no facilities other than the restrooms, and, and of course, tennis courts, basketball, but the, the aquatic center facilities could come in phase two. That launch float and dock, I, we got a good estimate off what Lido had done, and this is like four times what they, theirs cost, because ours was going to be a little bit larger. But that 500,000 allows for a lot that can be done. In other words, the tee can really be expanded, and there can be other, other tees off of it for people to tie up and, 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 and use. In addition, the, the aquatic center, that's 1.25 million. And both those items could come from private or public funding. You know, we don't expect the city, just like Billy did at NAC, they raised all that money to, I know the city offers them the site, they lease it from you, but they raised all that money, and, and I think we could get the same thing. I would certainly work hard to do that. And then in terms of the, the page three, the community center, that would be a city-funded effort, and that would be 2.25. So, the total, all that comes to about 8.5 million. So, that's basically the cost implications. And I know I've gone over, I'm going to wrap up now. Just in summary, you know, what the people really, really wanted, as I said before, is they did not, or what they did not want, is, you know, a commercial or private use, such as a marina. I mean, that was really expressed during No-on-L. And, and, but what they did want is a park that's for all residents. You know, this could be just a, well, it's, it's a, it's the last opportunity we have for a waterfront park in our town, and it would serve the entire community versus a few. So, you know, that was sort of the key and the heart and soul of our, of our plan. And, you know, it, it's a park that will be there for, into perpetuity for, for everyone to enjoy. So, we look forward to working with the city to go to detailed design drawings. We highly recommend the landscape architect firm that we've been using, Rabbin-Herman Design, who we've had on retainer for over a year to develop the, the final plans. He's very intimate now with, with, with Marina Park and what's involved, and the community outreach. He was a big part of that with us, so just kind of put in a pitch for him, too. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of Mr. Billings?
Um, just one quick comment. I think it's gorgeous, everything about it, but if you sit there, there will only be about four weeks out of the year where you'll see the sunset. The sunset sets over on the beach.
Okay, well...
Quite candidly. It does up the bay for about four to six weeks. It's a, it's almost, it's a cattywampus northeast orientation, so if you're sitting there, you won't see a sunset.
Okay, well, views of the bay and twilight.
Yes, I agree with that.
You'll have to go to the Bay Club, watch the sunset.
Yeah, there you go.
Couldn't we have a viewing platform on top of the community center that might possibly get a sunset?
I just say, go down to the beach.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We need to get one of the other proponents of, of one of the other options to give us a presentation. I...
And we even let them go behind us.
You know what? It's not a war, Tom. You know what I've been trying to do for months, so...
I will, Mayor, members of the City Council...
I think they're both win-win, I just make that.
Good evening. My name's Tim Collins. I am currently serving as a Harbor Commissioner, and I am the Chairman of the Subcommittee, as well as a member of the Citizens Committee that has worked on developing the Harbor Commission alternative. While we're passionate about our option, and as conceived by the Harbor Commission, we see an opportunity to serve water, coastal-dependent uses, and that's what we're about. But we don't stop there. We have been open to all inputs. We have convened Citizens Committees, outreach. Our outreach didn't start with No-on-L or any other initiative. We've listened for close to eight years with the beginnings of the Harbor Committee and through the formation of the Harbor Commission. Taking such, such input, we have revised our plan on several occasions. I'd like to hand out, maybe ask Mr. Rudolph to share with the staff and the council the most current version. What has changed in this version from the one that was in Mr. Kiff's slides are subtle, but they're important to understand. We received some feedback from our neighbors at the American Legion, that while they appreciated our efforts to provide them with some guest dock expansion and an additional fairway that we thought would have improved access to their own marina, that their preference was that they be left alone within the confines of their existing leasehold. So, we have respected that, and we have pulled back from that edge. So, the differences, again, are subtle, but they are responsive to, are listening to the community, are listening to our neighbors, and attempting to refine the product as we have gone forward. We continue to provide for public marina birthing, Girl Scouts, a community center, quality neighborhood, multipurpose park for both neighbors and all the residents of Newport Beach. But beyond the balance offered by this plan, the capability of serving the broadest spectrum of users, we also submit that the Harbor Commission Aquatic Park option is the only alternative which has demonstrated a fiscal responsibility. We have offered and continue to refine improvement cost estimates, revenue projections, and feel that they are capable of self-financing the project as we have designed it. This vision for the Harbor Commission Aquatic Park option will also, we believe, prove implementable on a technical scale when looking at policy, zoning, and environmental quality. We believe the agencies can support this option. And for its neighbors and the competing users, a project that substantially will mitigate its own traffic and parking impacts. We would ask that council look for the balanced plan that can best deliver public water, harbor-dependent uses, and recreational opportunities, all as required or in compliance with the LCP, Local Coastal Plan, with the harbor element of the general plan, tidelands policy, and city land use designations. This is our last waterfront land. Let's pursue the proverbial win-win option that meets all the council's planning objectives as described earlier in the presentation, and it serves the most... as described earlier in the presentation, and it serves the most community needs. We, as a subcommittee of the harbor commission, stand ready to assist staff and the council to support any ongoing research or studies of the concepts that interest you most. Thank you.
Does council have any questions, Mr. Collins, on this particular...
I have one question. Tim, the last page in your handout seems to have an overlay of a marina on top of the windows on the bay project. How many boats are accommodated in that marina?
There are 50 to 60 slips.
So you...
Double slips, those are doubles.
Oh, there are doubles, kind of like...
Those are doubles. They will accommodate 50 to 60...
Baja Naval?
30 to 40, yes, 30 to 40.
Okay.
A few 50-foot slips. The sizing is flexible.
Gotcha.
These are not mega yachts, as had been misrepresented earlier. These are to be where the demand has been demonstrated in this harbor to be excessive and unmet, and providing for the growth in the harbors need at that size of small entry-level boats.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the city council on this particular item?
You know, can Mr. Crowell come back for a minute? I'm looking at the super...
Mr. Collins.
Or Collins, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the superimposed plan here with the slips, but I don't see, is there extra parking provided for those slips? Or is it just the existing window on the bay parking?
No, the marina is fully parked according to the city code.
Where's the parking for that? Is that the parking lot?
Towards the street, the parking lot towards the street, towards Valvo Boulevard.
So, it's the same lot that the...
Same lot would serve all users.
About how many parking spaces is that, approximately?
Aren't we three-quarters of a space per slip?
I'll defer to Mr. Crowell on the technical...
We had originally structured this, understanding that we each had five minutes, so we split it into two five-minute sections. So, I'm your next five minutes to answer your question, to start my part of it. It's 120...
Do you need the lights off, by the way? Do you need the lights off?
Let's just leave it as it is, for right now, if we could, unless you need lights up there.
If you're done with the PowerPoint, I'd like to turn the lights on.
Okay, there will be another slide.
Okay, okay.
120 spaces are provided for in that parking area. The calculation of total numbers of spaces was provided in previous things that we handed to the city, and we've calculated them all out on the basis of code or practice in use. So, the number of spaces for the marina is accommodated within the total number of spaces on there. But I'd like to, if I may, do a presentation and then respond to your questions. Obviously, my name is John Crowell, I reside at 1004 South Bayfront. I served with Commissioner Collins as the second harbor commission member of the Marina Park Citizens Committee, and I'm also on the subcommittee as sort of the unpaid architect, landscape architect, general planner. Commissioner Collins is already focused on our role and contributions to the citizens committee effort, which did include, by the way, several presentations from us specific to the questions that you asked about A through F. We took each of those very seriously, and as you'll see in summary in the documents you have in front of us, we set out what we thought should be the objectives for this area. We sat out, or set out, the list of uses distilled from the list of uses that were developed by the citizens Marina Park Subcommittee. Those are listed in there. And we also did an extensive survey of similar analog facilities up and down the coast, focusing primarily on aquatic parks, which is what this would be and should be and could be. I've planned, designed, overseen construction of, and gone back 20 and 30 years later on every one of those parks. So, I have some experience in aquatic park planning and design here in Southern California. I think at the Marina Park site, we have an opportunity to create a unique aquatic park, which is unique to Newport. We are the only harbor in Southern California that doesn't have that kind of a facility that provides a public place where people coming down to the water's edge from the land, and people coming to the water's edge from the water can meet in a public interface area. We simply do not have that right now. We have a lot of public docks, we have a lot of bits and pieces of beaches and other things, but we do not have that kind of a place. And moreover, we also are at the bottom of the food chain and the list of harbors welcoming people who come to us as visiting boaters. We provide moorings, but moorings do not give you the opportunity to empty your holding tank, take a hot shower, and do a whole series of other things where we, because we're a no-discharge harbor, we want to encourage people to, as visitors, get off their boats, come and use facilities on the land, so that they're not encouraged to do something they shouldn't be doing at 2:00 in the night. And so, we're missing that component, that important component of visitor-serving facilities here, which is part of our mandate, both in our general plan and in the LCP. I think there've been a number of representations made about exactly what kind of a facility this might be. It's been suggested, and the term has been repeatedly and incorrectly used, that the marina portions of this would be a commercial marina. That is not correct, it has never been represented as such in any of our documents or any of our presentations. From the beginning, consistently to today, it has always been seen as another public marina in this harbor. I'm not sure that all of you are aware that we do have a public, small publicly operated marina in this harbor that is one of the best along this coastline. We're one of the few harbors that does have a public marina component to it. People keep asking why there isn't more. We have over 100 people on our newly revised waiting list there for that kind of access to the water through a public agency marina. That's different from trying to get access to the water through a privately operated commercial marina. So, having said that, this is a public marina.
Can you tell us the difference, what you perceive is the difference between public and commercial?
The difference is that it's being operated by a public agency directly, and not by a private lessee or a private operator.
I understand that, I mean, but operation...
The difference is that the private operator, who has to pay anywhere from 17% to 25% of the gross revenues to the landlord, public agency, has to structure rates and provide facilities that are often not provided in the public marinas in places such as Long Beach, Oceanside, Santa Barbara, and here in our small harbor. There are also other amenities and other facilities that can be provided that aren't typically provided in a private marina. We have almost 10,000 boats in the water here. We have 172 that are provided for in a public marina. And one of our other problems is that in private marinas, which have a landside privately-controlled area, the conversion rate throughout the United States and here in California is causing a loss of 5% to 8% of the total birthing inventory, simply by virtue of the fact that as these shipyards and other uses convert to another private use, those slips, which were previously available to the general public, anybody with the right money, are now pulled out of access to the general public and are accessible only to the people who are either residents of those condominiums or those new facilities, or only for the commercial interests that abut those areas. So, there's a closing window of public accessibility to general birthing in harbors in Southern California. And as I say, we're seeing an attrition, and we will see an attrition in this harbor based upon plans that are already in process, of over 100 slips a year for the foreseeable future. So, what we're trying to do is put a very small component of birthing back into this. Now, I've answered your question at length, I'd like to finish off my presentation, because it's late, if I may.
Please do.
Okay. Some have said that a park and a marina are incompatible uses. All you have to do is look at the aquatic parks that have been in place up and down this coastline for 50 to, 30 to 50 years, and you'll realize that that is simply an untruth. They exist very nicely, very well together, they're not incompatible at all, and can be designed as such. There is already a marina directly adjacent to the portion of this project that we're suggesting putting a new marina in, and so, it's not as if the marina just sort of dropped out of the sky into a pastoral location, it's going adjacent to another existing marina. The marina takes less than 20% of the total park area, which leaves 80% in shared uses and the open park. The park is actually as big as the park area in the Protect Our Parks Plan, as you'll see in a moment, and as you've seen in the document that we've handed to you. We're looking for some rational considerations of all of the uses that this body and the staff of the city know are required in consideration of waterfront property, such as this, particularly public waterfront property. The priority list starts with water-dependent and coastal-dependent uses. And among those are some of the uses we're talking about here. The irony is, of course, that approximately 99% of the two plans are nearly identical in terms of development program and intent, in terms of visibility, they're very similar, if not identical, or even in some cases, better. The idea here on our part was to try to come up with a joint plan. We were approached by the designer for Protect Our Parks several months ago with the concept that perhaps some sort of a joint plan could be worked out. I resisted that up until just recently, at which point I accepted the invitation, and we sat down, the two designers sat down, to try to work something out. That sketch that Councilman Ridgeway described earlier was the product of that effort. For whatever reasons, not only has Protect Our Parks pulled away from its earlier suggestion of slips and other facilities offshore, it has now reduced the marina facilities and those elements that are served by it to almost nothing. And I believe that use of tidelands, priority uses in the coastal zone would suggest otherwise, and our own policy documents suggest otherwise. Finally, I think it's important to stress, if you want to throw that other thing up there, that you, it's not important to necessarily fall in love with a particular drawing. I, in fact, I like this drawing better than the one that I did. Mine is a planning diagram, not a landscape architect's rendering. I can do those as well, but I chose to do a planning diagram, because that's what we were doing in the committee. What I did, though, was, as a result of the sketch that you saw described by Todd, I decided to just see what would happen if we simply took exactly the same elements that are in the drawing, in fact, it's a cut and paste, and moved them around and extended them. Now, this is one plan previous to the one that you've just seen from Protect Our Parks today, and you can see, in effect, that we have moved into it slightly, we have not changed the sizing of buildings or the provisions within the program, and what we have, in effect, is the little engine that could, the ability to not only meet a tremendous number of unmet boating needs in this community, in fact, we could fill that, if it existed tomorrow, we could fill that marina with 50% of the people that are on our waiting list for our existing public marina, and because Antonadis is coming up, we could fill those visitor slips in an instant, and we could fill them again during the visitors coming for the winter boat parade and for all of the summer activities. The analysis that we did on costs and on revenues, which is part of your package, and we have all the detailed breakout on that, if you'd like to see it, suggests that we have very definitely a win-win situation here, in which the landside uses throw off about a half a million, just based on 2005 fee information that we got from city departments, and that the marina would throw off, just using 2005 fees, of our existing public marina, about $1 million as a starter. The cost to build is described in there, about $12.9 million in 2005 dollars. We can tweak that a little bit in different ways. The ability to permit this thing and get it built is something that I know very well, and I feel very confident that we could do. And I think this is our effort, not to pull back from some sort of a joint effort in trying to develop Marina Park, but to move forward and try to work with the other folks that are trying to design something out here, because we think they've got a good idea. We support the park elements of it. We're surprised that we don't get the support on a very, very important thing that's of extreme concern to the harbor commission, and should be of concern to the city council of the city that has the largest small craft harbor in the United States.
Quick question here, on this plan on the right, your cut and paste plan, how many of those dock spaces would you envision being, like, permanent, where someone has their boat there, and how many as visitor?
As far as we're concerned, Councilman Rosansky, or Mayor Pro Tem Rosansky, the jury's out on exactly how we would choose to put the emphasis on this thing. They could be all visitor slips, they could be 50...
How do you feel about that?
I feel, if I were looking at it from a harbor commission standpoint and saying, can we keep those slips filled, I think that would be great, because we have a demand for 40, 50 slips at a time. We have only five public slips in this harbor, only three of which are...
In your opinion, as a harbor commissioner, do you think that the demand is greater for the visitor-serving slips or for the permanent slips?
It's beyond our ability to satisfy for both cases. The other choice...
Which would make the biggest impact, I guess?
The biggest impact, obviously, it's like any sort of thing, if you can fill them 12 months out of the year continuously, you're happy. If you have to fill them 12 months out of the year by filling them two months at a time, or 30 days at a time, you can do that, too. You can fill, you can do it both ways. Somebody leaves the...
No, I'm just saying that there's two perceived needs here. You're saying that there's visitor-serving need, and then there's also permanent slips face need. So, if we were to go one extreme to the other, say, all permanent or all visitor, which do you feel would fulfill the, I guess, the largest need? I guess this is where I'm going with it. I'll make it...
It's a good question, because I'm conflicted as well. We have an obligation to the people on our waiting list who are looking for permanent slips. There's 101 of those people as of today. We also have an obligation to the people that come here looking for visitor slips, and there are hundreds of them, and so, it's, how do you split the baby? I would say we'd split it halfway down the middle.
I guess my point is, and maybe someone can enlighten me, is exactly how many boat slips we do have in the harbor, but it would seem like another 30 is basically a drop in the bucket, drop in the ocean. But the visitor-serving slips, if we were to decide to go with some type of a marina plan in addition to the park plan, would seem to make the biggest impact on a perceived need that's woefully unmet in the harbor now.
You've also uncovered another interesting thing, that probably the easiest financing to get from state and federal levels is to fund visitor slips in harbors.
So, then doubly so.
The number of funding sources that are available to do that, that we've been considering as part of this, and we could do it all with visitor slips... as part of this, and we could do it all with visitor slips and tap into those resources. But again, I, I'm not going to answer you right now because I think it needs, it needs-
I don't know if there is an answer, I'm just trying to elicit, elicit information.
And I think we also have the visitor component and the long dock out there, which the smaller long dock serves all of our sailing program, expanded sailing program needs, UCI. Anybody else that wants to come in? There's a dinghy dock there for folks that want to come over and eat on the peninsula and come over in their dumpy and just sort of sit around and scratch themselves on the beach for people in their kayaks and so forth. So, this covers the entire range of the boating activities here in the harbor. It's neither elitist nor is it exclusive. It's inclusive in all respects, in the way that this harbor has always been.
Thank you.
John?
Yes?
I was interested in your comment that we have an obligation to, to provide boat slips to those that are on the waiting list for the, for the existing marina. I mean, the, if we built more slips, the list would just grow to another hundred people.
That's exactly right.
I mean, where does it end?
It's just like the obligation to widen Pacific Coast Highway or, or anything else in this community. The moment you, you know, no good deed goes unrewarded. Commission, or Councilman Selig, I think, you know, as Tim and I were saying the other day, you know, why are we doing this? And we, we both agreed that we're doing it because this is what Harbor Commissioners do. This is what you have appointed us to do, which is to look out for this component of this city's economy, recreation, citizen desires, and use, appropriate use of tidelands and waterfront property, particularly when it's public. So, we've looked at it from that standpoint, and I agree. I know, I'd love to see us have the capability to produce thousands of slips, but that's not possible in this harbor. Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, well, first of all, we're not Marina Del Rey County-owned land, and we only have this one piece. I'm going to answer Mr. Rosansky's question. It's a tough one. As you know, Baja Naval, if you go down there and you get a one-year lease, you get a rate that is lower. If you get a thirty-day rental, it's a much higher rental. So, it's a sliding scale depending on your visitor-serving boat coming in and how long they're going to stay here. I, I submit to you that this thing would stay adequately leased, and-
Oh, it certainly would.
I, I do agree, under our LCP, we do have an obligation to provide for this, but here's, you're, we're going, we're directed to give direction tonight. John, I think the single biggest fear for the people on the peninsula is perceived traffic. I know when I go over to Bayside Marine, traffic is, it's nonexistent, to be honest with you, and even at our other marinas. So, assuming we give some kind of direction that at least keeps us on this page, I, I think we need to understand traffic conditions. I think parking, it may be a little bit underparked if the park were to get used and the Girl Scout House get used and the marina get used all at the same time, but the fear from my neighbors is just what kind of traffic does it generate?
Well, certainly a visitor-serving use would probably generate the least amount of traffic because they come with a boat and not with a car.
Right. They come with bicycles, but-
Let me, let me answer that, if I may. The current-
Five minutes is up, John.
No philosophical discussion.
Concise. Three numbers, okay? Current Marina Park, mobile home park, according to previous documents, is estimated to generate, and only the twenty-four dwelling units that are, were continuously occupied, estimated to generate a hundred and twenty average daily trips on peak day. The marina portion of this, as proposed based upon trip tables used in the general plan, model trip generation rates, Table One, which is in public play, it's available to anyone to look it up, would be at the typical marina use on a peak day, eighteen to thirty trips, and the park and tennis and basketball would be, portions of the facility, would be twenty-three to forty-five trips per day. So, those aggregate to somewhere around forty-one, fifty-one to seventy-five trips versus the current hundred and twenty average daily trips. So, the impact is actually lower than the mobile home park if you believe the figures that you're supposed to be using for these kinds of calculations.
Okay, I think, I think that this is one of the things that, in asking for additional information, that is that we need to really look at, at some of those items for perhaps boat uses, the windows of the bay, plus this one, and, and make those evaluations.
Absolutely. As you know, I never do anything halfway, so it's, we've already done the EIR on this. We've got, I'm kidding.
Well, has it gone through EQAC yet?
Basically, the approach that I've always taken was to find out whether or not it's permissible and buildable and financially feasible and sustainable, and then work backwards to a plan that meets those requirements. And by that token, there's been a lot of research put into this that could be helpful to the process. Thank you for your time and your attention and for some good questions.
Now, is there anybody else that would like to make a presentation on, other than windows to the bay and the various different, two marina issues that we've looked at?
Well, we may have two shots, we get two shells.
Wait a minute.
No, wait a minute.
Wait a minute. Hold on. I am asking, my question I'm asking, is there any, any other plans that anybody wishes to make a, a presentation on?
Back in the corner there.
My name is Mark Womble. Mine is actually the small boat launch plan, yeah, launch ramp. I'm actually, compared to what these gentlemen put together, it's pretty, pretty simple. I'm pretty much a one-issue person. It really was unintended to turn into a full plan. It was more an idea to add to the other plans, some of what they're doing. I'm, I'm a small boat sailor, have been since yeetide, small tide. In Newport, we do not have a launch ramp for a small sailboat, period. You have fifty places to launch, hand, hand-launch craft, thousands of slips. You cannot sail, you cannot launch a small sailboat in Newport. If, if you go into the dunes and try to come out, you've got a twenty-one-foot height, you can't get out. So, all I was really doing was trying to interject the possibility of adding launch ramping to this last spot we left in the bay to do so. That was really my intent. So, my intent was to consider the possibility of, of launch ramp. I understand that the local community around Marina Park would certainly be impacted, but there really is, we have a quandary. There is nowhere else, no other opportunity within the harbor. So, that's why I included it myself, and that's it.
So, you would like to see a, some sort of trailer launch ramp included in, in either one of these alternatives?
Correct. I mean, obviously, you don't want enormous boats in, in this area, but we have this sector of the public that's not being served, and this is really the last place left to put one in, unless there's, you know, an alternative on the harbor that I've not found. Thank you.
Let's see. We had two people that made a presentation related to, we have another, a new gentleman up here.
I thought John was going to stay the night. My name is Joe O'Hara. I recognize, guys, that the nature of politics is compromise, but great things don't often result from people who split the difference. There's really fundamental danger in, in a compromise here. Giving a passing wave to a few park facilities, and that's what's being done here as a means of legitimizing a big-boat commercial marina, is, is really not the answer. You have a situation here where we've had multiple plans from the Harbor Commission. Basically, it involves moving grass around the, the central concept, which is a marina. The, the use of the last remaining opening on the bay for a marina is, is selfish elitism at its extreme. It deprives all residents of their last significant access to the bay. It serves the revenue-producing few at the expense of many. You know, come on. Does our harbor need more marina space? Of course. You've heard the old adage, like soccer's fields and freeways, there'll never be enough. Do eighty thousand residents deserve the last chance for public access to the bay? You'll decide what's most important, and the people will remember it, I think. There's a fundamental incompatibility between marinas, commercial or otherwise, and park-type uses. I think example, best example, children's play areas and marinas, they're just not compatible. PBNR agrees with us. You're ditto for the, the, the general use of a park by parents, children, and so forth. The Girl Scout programs, they're not at all understood by the Harbor Commission. They simply won't work in a facility shared with snack bars and community centers and marina offices and so forth, and I can speak from, from ongoing significant experience over the last few days. You, you have a situation here where economies of scale are an issue, the operating economies of a small marina and a small park. We end up with, with a situation that you, you get, you get a hermaphrodite out of the situation. It's not a good park, it's not a good marina. And most important, overriding all of this is the fact that we don't represent the, the hundred people who wait on this, on the waiting list for slips. We're talking about the thirty thousand people who voted for a park. We're trying to represent the community, and the community that, that we're talking about are represented by the Peninsula Point Association, by the Central Newport Association. This is not people just around the Marina Park area. This is the, you know, eighty-five percent of the people on, on the peninsula have responded negatively to the idea of a marina. I, I think that you, you've got to step back and ask yourself, whom do you owe your obligation to? And frankly, I think the people on the marina or on the peninsula are a higher priority than some of the things we've heard here tonight. Thank you.
Joe? Got a question for you. I can understand your argument somewhat on the policy nature of whether we want to take some of the area and turn it from, you know, so-called park into, into water, but as I look at the Harbor Commission's proposal here on the, on the way they've put the boat slips in here, and you talk about a marina being incompatible with these different things, I'm, I'm really having a hard time seeing it. You talk about the, the Girl Scout House and the, and the tot lots, and they're completely on the opposite end of the property. There's, there's virtually no interface between those two uses, and yet the other, the other uses that they have adjacent to the boat slip area seem totally compatible with it, the, the aquatic center and things like that. You know, maybe as, as Councilman Ridgeway mentioned, maybe, you know, one weakness is, is the amount of parking. I don't know about that, but the, you know, you know, your argument on incompatibility there just doesn't make sense to me.
Let's start off with the fact that, that the, the basic incompatibility lies between the concept of a, of a commercial marina and the residents of the peninsula. There's the Central Newport Association, on several official polls and a couple of straw votes, ended up with an eighty-five percent negative vote on the marina concept. The Peninsula Point Association feels the same way. Now, you know, this is not just people around, around the corner. It's, it's, it's the entire peninsula. The, the issue of, of interplay and compatibility, I think, is, is one that, that needs to be examined carefully. What, what is proposed on the plan that, that Mr. Corral laid out here? I, I don't see a lot of activity that, you know, that includes the Girl Scout House and so on and so forth. The, the original plan, it really had one building in it. Suddenly, we've now superimposed something on, on our, on our plan, and, and we've changed our story. But this, this process of moving closer and closer to, to the, the window on the bay approach puzzles me, quite honestly. I'm not sure where he's going with it, except, again, to try to justify the existence of a, a, a marina. What are fifty boat slips going to do for the, the problems in this harbor right now when the neighborhood, all the way out to the point, doesn't want them? I can't say anything better than that, Councilman.
I would tend to agree with you on commercial permanent slips, but I think there is a substantial unmet need for visitor-serving uses, and although this, you know, the Peninsula Point folks and the Central Balboa folks obviously have a, a strong interest in what happens here, it is a citywide piece of property and a citywide facility, and it has to meet a number of, of needs, not just the immediate neighborhood, but other needs in the community. Keep that in mind when you're-
I don't dispute that at all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Council, okay, we have one more? Are you going to tell us how to fit this into Balboa Island?
We'll row across. Hi, Tom Houston, two oh six Ruby, Balboa Island. I'd like to politely disagree with Tim and Dorson, maybe, maybe even Joe. My opinion of the vote on, on L was by far more against the hotel and the timeshare proposition than a vote for a park. And believe me, parks are great. I think the city has many that, when our kids were growing up, they were on all of them probably at one time or another. A disclaimer, I don't own a boat, don't plan to own a boat. We've got some kayaks. I would recommend strongly that, you know, this is maybe the last chance we get, a, a chance on the water for the city to offer guest slips. I don't see any other place that's going to make much, much of a dent. The, as a businessman, I think it's partly your responsibility to help improve restaurant use and access, bring some people in that do travel up and down the coast. I think that's a responsible position to take. Because this is a, a unique piece of property, I think it's, it's, it makes no sense not to include a boating component to it, in this case relatively small. There's an awful lot of public views, which is part of what's being proposed in both plans, public walkways on the oceanfront, around the islands. So, I don't think any of the general public is missing out on, on a view by putting in a relatively small facility that would help the boating community. As a businessman, I also really like the financials. I, I think that's another responsibility that you folks have. There's always an argument over money. Here's a potential project that, that would come close to, if not pay for itself over time. And last but not least, I don't see anything wrong with a compromise, if you want to look at it like that, that this is something that can work for a lot of different uses that we all have as different individuals. Not everybody's looking for grass, not everybody has a boat, so providing something like this, I think it's a wonderful compromise. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're winding down. Okay, please.
I just jumped up about an hour ago, about after the Girl Scout Council. My name's Linda Ramage. I live at thirteen nineteen West Bay Avenue. Todd, you're absolutely wrong about the usage of the Girl Scout facility. I've been the Girl Scout Service Unit Manager for five years, for those of you that don't know what that is. I serve all the Girl Scout troops on this side of Back Bay. We're a community association that, I'm Newport Harbor Three, Newport Harbor Two is Newport Coast and all of the city of Newport Beach on the other side of the bay. Both Newport Two and Newport Three use the facility, and yes, it is booked on a daily basis. It is a rare occasion that there is not a Girl Scout walking through that door on, every single day. It is booked on a lottery basis, six months in advance for overnighters, and yes, they come from all over the country. They're welcome from all over the world to apply to stay at the Girl Scout House. I've had a troop for seven years. My girls would like to meet there three times a week, they told me in September. They use the place, unfortunately, only twice every other Thursday because we have such heavy use. It's very hard to get troop time in there, and yes, it is available to the city for you- And yes, it is available to the city for use during the daytime. But after school hours and even into the evening, for working parents, they have meetings, you know, starting at six o'clock at night. So that is why, and the windows on the bay that they met with the Girl Scout Council, that they want two stories. So that they can meet two troops at the same time. Our service unit on this side of the bay, I've helped grow in heavy recruitment last fall to almost double the size it was. We have Newport Heights that is start, has become a very active school in our service unit. We have grown the number of girls, and I've trained leaders at the Girl Scout facility during school hours. I trained probably upwards of twenty leaders this year alone. And it's an ongoing thing. And as our city grows and as Newport Coast is annexed in, we have more and more and more Girl Scouts. Unfortunately, and fortunately, you can't see that and witness that when you drive by it. But the place is in use. And it, the fact that it is private and that we don't have a lot of looky-loos, looking at, you know, being able to view the girls is kind of a detriment to us too, because I don't think that this, this community realizes, unless you are involved in scouts, how much the girls do do in this community and how much they love scouting. And I'm a son of an Eagle Scout, and I know Mr. Rosansky and Mr. Webb from that. Mr. Webb did my son's Eagle Scout review. And, um, you know, scouting is very important to me, so I had to just jump out of bed and correct you. So I'm going back to bed now, I can sleep.
Look, let me, let me make a comment. I'll stand corrected, but I want to say both plans have a Girl Scout house in it. So you're, 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 no, 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 this is about an issue of what ultimate use is. Let me say, both plans have the Girl Scout house in it.
They do, I, I, I see that now, I agree with you on that. But there has been, there have been plans that have been thrown around that is a multi-use facility for the community center and the Girl Scout house.
Never on my watch and never in those meetings, never.
Well, I can email you some things I've seen on coming through my email with plans for them, yes, there have been. Yeah.
I, I think there have been some plans that have discussed a multi-use facility.
But the Girl Scouts always had their facility, matter of fact, the lady...
No, privately, no, they had to share it.
All right, that's, that's one of the items that we need to discuss because these are all conceptual plans. None of them are set in stone, and yes, it could be a joint-use facility and it could be a separate facility, depending on which direction we end up ultimately going. Okay, I'm, uh, will you? Public comment, uh, we, uh, we're, it's eleven thirty, and I don't want to cut off somebody that has new information for us, please come down. I'm hoping to get home before two o'clock today.
Well, we got her out of bed, so, yeah, we should all go home. My name's Craig Rager, um, some of the councils, some of the new, uh, city council members don't know me. I was a member on the Marina Park Committee. Mr. Councilman Rosansky brought up a very good point of why we didn't come up with, why didn't we amass a recommendation? I thought that was part of our, uh, part of our duty of being on this, being on this committee. We did come up with, you know, as part of our subcommittee, we did come up with some boundaries on what we thought should be, you know, like, we just discussed about the Girl Scout house. Everyone agrees there should be a separate Girl Scout house. We had some parameters and we clearly defined those, and, and I for one wanted to present those to the city council, but instead we, we, we kind of have what we're dealing with now. I guess it comes down to what, we have a public asset here. What is the best use of this public asset? And it's up to you city council members to determine what is the will of the people of Newport Beach? And how could this asset be, be the most used to the most people in the city of Newport Beach? Because this is an asset to the city of Newport Beach. Tim Collins and John Crowe did a great job on their, all the work they've done presenting their plan. Tom Billings and Joe Horr did a great job. They, they, they put a lot of their own money, a lot of their time into this. Trying to protect our pop, you know, protect our parks, did a, did a lot of public outreach that I wanted to do in our, in our, in our committee to find out what is the will of the people? What do the people of Newport Beach really want this to be? Now it seems like it's in your hands now to determine what is the will of the people of Newport Beach for this land. Recently, by the way, if you don't know me very well, my name is Mr. Analogy, I come up with analogy for everything. Recently, five Newport Beach residents, I believe, were fined two hundred thousand dollars for, um, for destroying some dunes in front of their West Newport homes so they could have a better ocean, ocean, ocean view. But really, why were they fined that amount of money? They were, they were fined that money to put the dunes back, but it was their effort to convert a public asset into their private, you know, get their private view back of. You know, they wanted a better view of the ocean. They were fined for that. So here we have a public asset, and we should be fined for not determining what is the will of the people and what is the best use for that asset. As far as the boat slips, we can always add on more boat slips. There's, I, I don't know how many slips are in Newport Beach, three thousand. If we add on fifty, the visiting slips might have some appeal. But we'll never be able to meet that demand. So, um, that's about all I have to say, and it's up to you, fine gentlemen and, and ladies, to determine what is the will of the people of Newport Beach. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the period, the public hearing unless somebody has some new information to bring forward. Seeing no one, uh, I would like to, uh, ask for the council to give us some guidance on which direction they would like to go.
Well, I, I just want to start, I, I'm not going to, when Alan Beat got up and he asked questions, he didn't make comments. Who's going to use this park? People on the peninsula, are you going to use it? I think Alan answered it when he asked it. So I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. I, I think there are components of the park, the Girl Scout house certainly is used, always has been used. There is a, there is not a community, there is not a community room really there now. Uh, I think, I will say, PBNR, I think, had a plan that had a joint use between Girl Scouts. But between POP and the aquatic park, no. Anyhow, Alan asked some interesting questions, and I thought they were good probing questions. And I, I think, um, I, I don't have answers for them. Uh, I think I'm on record as trying to get a compromise plan. I think it makes financial sense. Uh, I do agree that a visitor-serving dock is critical. You know, if I, if I were to give direction, it would be to try to get you guys, and it seems like, you know, I agree with Mr. Houston. And I, I too walk this city, and I too visit every homeowners' association, and I'm going to tell you, no one else knows no one a hotel, period. You can say what you want all day long. It's easy to walk down to the peninsula or the Newport, Central Newport Homeowners Association, where I go to every year and speak every year because they ask me to come there, and I have a hundred and fifty of my constituents that boo me. Why? Because I don't represent that hundred and fifty people. I represent a larger constituency. I represent everybody on the peninsula, and I can tell you, the people who don't show up really voted for no hotel. And I also represent every other district in this city. So when you, it's a little disingenuous for, for, for people to come up here and say, well, the Central Newport and the Peninsula Point Association has said no. I've worked with those organizations for six years as planning, seven years up here. Let me make a comment, Central Newport, Mr. Analogy. I, I wanted, no, I, I, I think everybody at the POP, or at my prop committee, wanted palm trees in Balboa. But there were some older people who were just strident. So we don't have palm trees because the other people wouldn't speak up. And it wasn't my vote, to be honest with you. So we have trees that the majority of the community are not happy with. So that's the silent majority. They stood, they were right here in this room, and the strident, uh, group stood up and said, we demand this kind of tree, and that's what we got. Because people were afraid to, to oppose. Well, I'm here to represent, and I think everybody up here is to represent. I don't know what plan's going to happen. I can say honestly, they're both wonderful plans for the peninsula. I submit to you, the one that uses only twenty percent and leaves the majority of your, um, park is a great plan. There is no conflict there, and it's financially responsible, and this project will move forward much faster. If you stick to your plan, we're going to end up with a piece of dirt there for, for years. And if that's what you want, so be it. I won't be here. It'll be another person voting, but that's how I feel today. I feel we should move forward with a, with a compromise plan. I think it's so close. All your buildings there, they block. Quite candidly, I'd like to see masts and boats in there, I'd love to. I just think it's gorgeous. I like hearing them, I like seeing them, people like walking around them. There is many components to the compromise plan that are extremely compatible, and I don't understand the strident nature with which you come in here.
Would you be satisfied with a marina that only had sailboats in it because that's...
Yeah, I like sailboats, because they're lower profile, I, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
We'll put a limitation...
Mr. Selig.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to maybe make a proposal here to get this, get this off the dime. I think we've got two good proposals here, and, um, the, uh, you know, really the difference gets down to this issue of boat slips and visitor-serving versus marina, how many. And what I'd like to suggest is that, is that maybe we take the council members that were on the Marina Park Committee and have them meet with the representative from each of these two groups and have that committee come back to the council with some type of recommendation. I don't think the two groups are going to get together, and so maybe it's, and maybe it's necessary that the, some representatives from the council meet with them and, uh, that group can come back and make a recommendation to us as a whole. But I, you know, they're, they're two excellent plans, very well thought out, a lot of work has gone into them, and we're just down to, really, if you look at it, it's just one, you know, one, one, one issue there that needs to be resolved. Functionally, everything else is pretty much the same in the two proposals, so that, that would be my suggestion in how we can, you know, get this off the dime here.
Would, it seems like to me that one of the things that we have promised is that we would get a public outreach element to this. And I'm wondering if there is some additional information that could be put together on these two options? Maybe even a compromise on the, the marina option that it, that, uh, we come up with a visitor-serving marina as opposed to a commercial portion, that's not going to generate as much revenue, but, uh, and put together some information that would allow us to, to have some, uh, one or two public hearings to, to get more public input on the two options that we're looking at. So I'm, I'm tossing that out as a, as another option too.
You could work that in with my suggestion and work them both together.
Mr. Rosansky?
Yes, um, I'll try and be brief here because it is late. I am a little disappointed that the committee chose to disregard the, the mandate of the council and, and what they were supposed to do, and we really just had the alternatives, and they kind of glossed over some of the other things, which is now going to require us to, to develop those programs, the outreach or, or whatever it's going to need to take to resolve this issue. Personally, you know, when we looked at this property back, um, when, and we were talking about the hotel, I was a supporter of the hotel because I believe that the hotel fulfilled a need on the peninsula. There was a perceived need for revitalization. We had a developer who was going to spend substantial sum of money investing in this property and, and, and hopefully, it, it, it didn't serve the, a park need, which other people felt was important, but it was a competing need, and I felt that that was a, a genuine need to, the revitalization. It didn't pass, it was voted down two to one. I, 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 I think it was a vote against a hotel. I, I, I don't, though, agree with Councilman Ridgeway a hundred percent that it was, was, I, I think there was a certain element in the, in the community that was looking for a park there, or thought, perceived the vote as a park or a hotel, not just no hotel. So I will concede that. My feeling is at this point that, that the property does need to have a substantial park component. If we are going to incorporate boat slips here, I do feel that the commercial slips, uh, permanent slips are, are just, as I said earlier, drop in the bucket, and I would not be a supporter of, of, of incorporating marina here. I do perceive, though, a need for visitor-serving slips that we virtually cannot meet anywhere else in the community, in the harbor, and I would be willing, or I would be interested in exploring that option. I would hope that the, the two applicants here or the proponents would get together. I understand that, you know, you, you want what you want, but unfortunately, there are many competing needs in this community. It's not just the residents in the local area, it's not the residents up in Newport Coast, it's the entire community. And so it is a, a limited resource that we have. We have to use the resource to the best of our ability and to get the, squeeze the most juice out of this orange that we possibly can. So with, with that, that's my thoughts on it. I, I think we basically boiled down this list of eight potential uses to really the two. I'd suggest that we, uh, advise staff to focus on those two in dealing with the proponents and, and coming back to the council with the proposed plan for this property. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We need to get a motion going here sometime so that we can, uh...
There is no motion, it's no action.
Well, we need to, well, all right.
I think Mr., didn't Mr. Selig put an idea on the table?
Well, we need to give some more specific, that's one of the problems with the committee guidelines that we gave before. We were so general that we didn't really give them a direction to go, so I... Well, well, Mr. Rosansky's comments are directed to you and me. We're the ones that directed the non, the non-incorporation, number one. Number two, this was supposed to be a study session, Homer wanted it at night, so it'd be televised, and hopefully we'll get input. And maybe the Daily Pilot can do their headline with an eight-hundred number, you know, that kind of thing. But that was, this is really a study session late at night.
I agree, and I, I think I made my position clear to what direction I would like to see this project take. You know, I think it pretty much aligns with what Ed was talking about, and I think it kind of aligns with what you were talking about, Ted, or, um, Todd.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, it's late, and I got to catch a plane at seven o'clock tomorrow morning out of LAX, so I want to get out of here. But the bottom line is, I think we've given the staff direction here. I, I, we haven't heard from Leslie and Dick yet, but, and, well, I think you've agreed with...
Well, I thought that juice out of an orange was pretty good at midnight.
Juice out of an orange.
Okay, well...
We got a lemon, let's make some lemonade.
Mr. Kiff, do you think you have sufficient guidance to go forward from here?
My guidance would be, and you can correct me if I, that's, if you don't think I'm restating what you said, was to, um, take these two plans, the basic windows-on-the-bay plan, the windows-on-the-bay amended by the Harbor Commission plan, and, um, go ahead either at a staff level, or actually, Councilmember Selig suggested at a council level, and, and force more communication between the two groups to, in essence, flesh out those plans. I, I would probably recommend a feasibility analysis of each to make sure they're doable. And then combine that with a public outreach plan, bring that back to you. Unless people shake their head, we could do that.
This is one of the things the committee did discuss, was that we were going to have a public outreach program.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, just as Dave, as you undertake that, I think it'd be very important that we get very comparative data between the two plans. Square footage of sand on the beach or beach sand, for example, beach frontage, green space, the size of the Girl Scout facility. I, my wife was a Girl Scout leader. I think we all agree, I think the votes are on this council, so we'll be a separate Girl Scout facility. And those kinds of things, so that we can, and, and revenue and cost data between the two, so those can also be factored into that.
I just want to, it's not sand, it is definitely mud down there. Once that tide goes a little bit down, it's the pits.
Mr. Mayor?
That doesn't mean it couldn't be augmented.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Rosansky?
I would like to make one suggestion or proposal, that we do straw vote maybe...
I, I would, I would like to make one suggestion or proposal, that we do straw vote, maybe, as far as the type of, if there is a marine, marina component, the type of marina component that we would, the council would be interested in pursuing. I think that, that would help give the staff a little bit of direction as to which way they wanna go.
Sure, that's helpful.
And I would propose that it be, that we focus on a visitor-serving type use as opposed to permanent, uh-
Wait, wait, wait. I was gonna say, the design is the issue here, not the operation. You're now talking about-
No, I think it is the operation, because I think that there are operational issues with regard to parking, whether, uh, permanent slips will need permanent parking spaces as opposed to visitor-serving boats that won't need as many parking spaces. I think it's, uh, a focus on what the need is in the community. It's not just the layout of the, of the slips.
Absolutely.
Because I'm not interested in pursuing a plan that, that, that just provides permanent dock space.
We, we have a code-
I will vote for that.
We have a code section that basically says you have to design to these standards for docks, period. You're talking operations. This is not-
I'm talking about a use of a piece of property. I think that's what we're gonna determine. What is the use of the property?
I know, but it's gonna have the same amount of parking whether it's visitor-serving or whether it's permanent.
Well, in my mind, it's, it's a different story.
But it, that's operational. That is pure operation.
Well, I'm just telling you what, I, I'm, if it came down to a vote of whether, you know, do I want a, a park with a marina that's gonna have permanent spaces, I'm not gonna vote for that. So what I'm saying is, I'm interested in pursuing a park with a potential marina that's gonna have visitor-serving uses, because I perceive a need in the community for that. I don't perceive a strong need or a demand that's gonna be met by permanent spaces.
Is there a concern that you, that it starts as visitor and then creeps into permanent?
Well, why don't you let Mr. Kiff do his analysis? He said he's gonna do a needs-
Because I want the analysis to be based upon a visitor-serving use.
We could do it on-
If we're, if we're talking about revenue generation, I think that's what Councilman Curry asked for, then I want revenue generation based upon visitor-serving, not what 40 or 50 permanent slips are gonna generate.
I think that, uh, if we can, you can do both.
We can do both, sure.
Still come back with information.
Well, that was the reason I asked for the straw vote. If I, if there's not four or five votes for it, then there's not four or five votes for it. But why, the, the whole idea here is to narrow this thing, please, Don, the whole idea here is to narrow this thing down and not to drag this thing out for the next five years. Let's get going on a plan. Let's be leaders. Let's make a decision.
Are you going to-
I'm sorry it's getting late, but I'm getting very irritated. This is an irritating discussion.
Would you pause for a minute?
I'm paused.
Count to 10 backwards. Do we wish to straw vote the issue related to the guest docks versus public, I mean, yeah?
No.
All right. All right, we're gonna straw vote at, well, I, I get about a half and half here. Okay, those in favor of only doing a straw vote to discuss, I mean, to determine whether or not we're going to have all visitor-serving or all marina?
Um, I think there was some qualifying language being if there is a marina.
If there's a marina, right.
If there's a marina.
Yeah.
Okay, those in, those in favor of-
The straw vote.
The straw, ah, shh. Okay, let's, let's skip the straw vote, vote, and say those in favor of, of having a visitor-serving marina as opposed to a full-service marina.
As part of the feasibility.
As a part of the feasibility study.
Compared to its park proposal.
And the park proposal is out there. It's there and being considered. Okay.
But I have a vote at all.
So there would be also a feasibility on the park, too, proposal?
Well, we'll be doing the feasibility on the park as a separate, I, the, the issue is, are we gonna do our feasibility study only on a mar, a full marina or only on a, uh, visitor-serving? Or should there be a combination in between? But those are three options, but-
So that's a motion.
I made my motion. I, my motion or-
This is only visitor-serving, right?
Is on, that we limit the study to visitor-serving marina if there is going to be a marina component at Marina Park.
Okay, please vote on that.
I know, I'm out of order. Can I make a quick recommendation? Because, you know, this is, Tom, let's vote.
You wanna limit this to visitor-serving?
Yes.
With Councilmember Ridgway and Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rid, uh, Mr. Selig.
You keep confusing me with him. It's okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I'd just make one suggestion if, in, in doing part of this, I don't think it should just rely with staff. I, I, I think these two groups getting together, they haven't come up with any resolution yet. I think, I still go back to the, the Marina Park Committee council members be involved in this thing, because I think that's the only way we're gonna come back with some resolution on it. And like, uh, I agree with Councilman Rosansky, let, let's get this resolved and get on with it.
Okay, do you have your guidance?
Yes, thank you.
It is past 11 o'clock bewitching hour. We still have four, five items on the consent calendar that we haven't discussed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I say we continue and finish it.
All right, okay. Let's go fast. Item four was Dolores, pull this item off.
No, continue the, finish the counter. It'll be, it's five minutes. We'll be done.
Are we, are we doing this? Because I'll go first.
We're gonna do, come on, Dolores. We've indicated that-
Item four. Item four, okay, hi. Um, I wanted to know what this means. Ad hoc committee, what does that mean? Does it mean that it's open to the public or not open to the public? Item number four is-
Is this the media, is this the media?
Yeah.
This is gonna be a brown act committee.
The committee and the two committees together.
So this is gonna be open to the public. Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
I would make one suggestion. I did talk to, um-
Yes.
Oh, you're gonna do it? Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Portman Rosansky suggested that we designate, uh, terms for the appointees, especially the citizen appointees, that they're not indefinite. He proposed two-year terms. That seems appropriate. So if you were to include that in the recommended action in addition to those four-
I move the, or-
Public comments is? Public comments? Hearing none? Go forward.
Okay, I move the action with the, uh, uh, recommendation that we limit the term of the citizen members to a length of two years.
Second, second.
This is the, the new media committee.
Has everybody voted?
Motion carries.
Item 10 was, uh, Mr. Nichols, Newport Heights, Cliffhaven. This is an accepting of work, Dick. This isn't a new contract.
I understand. I wanna know one point about both of them.
Okay.
And then, and as far as I understand, I understand that this is an acceptance of work. And that is, I think, Don, that we got to look at how we use this, and this is sort of a stretch to be using road funds to build a retaining wall and put a fence on it and all that kind of stuff. Seems to me that we ought to be using, and particularly when we're talking about a million dollars, a measure M funds, they ought to be used for significant roads that we have to repair and, and move traffic, not to be, uh, repairing them. I mean, I don't, it doesn't seem to me to be a good use of those funds.
Okay, would you wanna make a motion to approve both those items?
I will make a motion to approve both the items.
Second. We're voting on 10 and 13 now. Yes, 10 and 13. Public, you have any comments on those two? Hearing none, let's go, uh, please vote on items 10 and 13.
What do we have left?
Motion carries.
Dolores, fold item 17.
I didn't know that someone would know what was happening, but I don't really think anyone would.
Too many people are, are, are watching at this point. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. Could someone please give some detail? We have changed, um, these items now will come earlier in the meeting, so that means that everything will be later in the meeting? Is that what's happening? You've changed it back to how it used to be?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's what this would, if we did vote in favor of this tonight, we would change it back to the way it used to be, where we consider the consent calendar items immediately after we vote on the full consent calendar.
I remember those days. They weren't that long ago. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, and I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Smoothie item.
Well, that assumes Mr. Hildreth doesn't show up again.
Close the public hearing.
I'll second, uh, Councilman Curry's movement of the item.
Item 18 was pulled by Councilmember Nichols, if I remember correctly.
Motion carries.
Item 18, comments on the West Side General Plan Amendment in Costa Mesa, was pulled by Mr. Nichols, I believe.
My intention here is for people to realize that the City of Costa Mesa is pushing through a plan that may indeed eliminate the measure M funds that we were getting, that one would maybe improve traffic flow from their end of 55 freeway down towards our measure M funds, which are then both, uh, improve 55 and Newport Boulevard. The second thing is, is that the 19th Street Bridge may indeed be gone. And, and I believe that we ought to have some understanding of what Costa Mesa is doing with regard to this, and, and-
It's a good app.
I can understand that, so I want a little broader understanding of that, frankly. I think we need to debate this as a, as a council, so people have some idea of what's going on. And at least that, or, and if we, the EQUAC and, and around through the planning committee, so we, uh, look at your, your council.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and staff doesn't disagree, we just think that that discussion would be better off made after an EIR is done and towards some of the impacts.
Basically-
I know, but our letter is requesting it.
No. It's asking, sir?
An, an EIR.
Is that your understanding, right? Did you invite to?
Sorry, I'm not all together on mic. But you wanna get an EIR done that can, that before?
This, this letter is requesting that before the City of Costa Mesa approve their, um, proposed general plan amendment and rezoning for their west side, which would allow residential development in place of some industrial development, that they do some additional traffic study. They have done a draft mitigated negative declaration, and, which is supported by a traffic study, and what this letter is asking for is further, um, traffic review. Part of the project does not include changes to the, um, master plan of arterial highways. The concern is that in their traffic study, they assumed that those facilities would not be there. We are asking that they study more fully the impact of those facilities not being there. And we don't have-
You're challenging their mitigated negative deck and asking them to, to do a full EIR, so we can see that.
We're not asking for a full EIR. We're asking for additional traffic study.
Well, because the uses that they are producing actually probably generate less traffic than those that are on the books today. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and time is short. We don't have time to send this to EQUAC and have committees or anybody work on it because the public hearing at the Costa Mesa City Council is, um, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay. Thank you. All right, do I hear a motion to approve this item?
Wait a second, though. No, I-
Public comments first.
Hi, yeah, my name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. And what I don't wanna see happen in Costa Mesa is what's happened to us in Irvine. And I think we need to pay attention, and we need to be vigilant about it, because we on EQUAC had to vote to make sure that we could look at, at these types of things in surrounding communities. And had it not been that recently we hired an attorney because they're going over, um, EIRs that are 20 years old with overlays, okay? That's, that's not right, and we need to be, we need to pay attention. Thank you. And so I really appreciate Dr. Nichols' comments on this. Thank you.
And we are paying attention, and that's the reason why the letter is being sent. But that isn't gonna really do a full attention, is what I'm questioning, Don. We need to really look at the darned- Do we have a motion on this item?
I'm over it.
I second it. Please vote.
Motion carries. Motion for reconsideration.
Are there any motions to reconsider?
We've all counted the pumpkins.
I'm sorry.